Want you guys to work on it and bring it back once you get it going.
Okay.
Are we good, Jim?
Yeah, they're gonna bring my computer back if they can get it working.
You're good? Anthony?
Yeah, we're ready. Yep.
We're good?
Yeah.
Peter, we good? Okay.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
I thought it was your voice. I was like, wow. I didn't know what happened.
I got skilled.
He wished he had a voice like that.
Yeah.
You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted for... Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Okay, well, thank you everyone for attending today's meeting for June 2nd, 2020. Before we continue, and we have a pledge of allegiance led by Supervisor Peter Hernandez, I'd like to give an acknowledgement and I will have a moment of silence for George Lloyd. Can we please, once we give a flag solution this, have a quiet moment? Supervisor Peter Hernandez, will you meet it all, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The house will be informed that you would like to speak.
Thank you. And then at the end of the meeting, would Supervisor adjourn the meeting in honor of him at the end of the meeting? Okay, let's move on. Have a acknowledged certificate of posting.
So move Mr. Chair Gilio.
Is there a second?
Medina.
Motion by Gilio, second by Mr. Medina Hall, both in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Against, motion carries. Would Dulce please explain to the public the process and how to communicate with the board during the meeting? Thank you, Dulce.
Hi, if you're participating by Zoom and would like to make a comment, do a public comment, you can either, one, raise your hand on the icon on the bottom, or if you're participating by phone, it's star nine. And when we come to a public comment, we'll remind any public members of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dulce. We will now go to presentations and recognations. We have none. Public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board on issues of interest and not appearing on today's agenda. No action may be taken unless provided by government code section 54954-2. Do you have any speaker cards?
No.
No speaker cards?
That's good, yeah.
We don't have it.
Oh, do we have any speaker cards? None?
No, actually, there are.
Okay.
Oliver, you're ready? Try your video.
Go ahead, just put the video on. I'm just gonna leave it on.
Go ahead and state your name for the record, and you will be given three minutes.
Why don't you take it?
My name is Deanna Trinidad, and I coordinate the long-term care ombudsman program in San Benito County. I live in Santa Cruz County, but I work in the local county. And my nonprofit advocates and is a voice for the residents of long-term care residents in facilities like skilled nursing facilities, nursing homes, and residential care facilities for the elderly, the assisted living. And I attended last week's emergency board of supervisors meeting, and I noticed that there was a great deal of polarization around a lot of issues concerning constitution rights and also public health. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board for taking the time to listen to all of the available information. And during this time of extreme polarization, I want to encourage everyone on both sides of the argument to take a moment and try to understand where the other side is coming from so that we can move forward together. And while everyone has very important visions and priorities, I think as a community, we come together and perhaps change those priorities just then slightly during this time, during this critical time, to focus more on the public and on the community health and on the individuals who are unable to stop during this time because they are stuck in their long-term care facilities or they are quarantining due to health concerns because of the... Is there, if you have the... Sorry, losing my train. Very... That's basically it. I just want everyone to take the time and think about everyone else's point of view so that we can move forward in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no more speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll continue. Now we'll go to department head announcements, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairius. We do have some announcements. I'd like to invite up Harry Mavergenes. He is our RMA director. He's gonna give a couple of department head announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First of all, I want to say our counter, our front counter has been closed to the public since March 17th. However, that has not stopped the RMA department from serving the public. In our building apartment, utilizing electronic payments and electronic filing, we took in over 100 building permits during the time period that we were allowed to. And we issued towards the end, as of yesterday, between March 17th and yesterday, 100 building permits and took in $1,435,000 in fees. We took in 17 planning permits and collected approximately $380,000 in planning fees. And we are now working on several projects, major projects that we'll be bringing to the planning commission. Additionally, we have been working, our public works department, as you'll see today, has been very busy. We have nine projects for your approval today. Six using the SB 1 funds, three of them utilizing the first batch of Measure G funds. There'll be more to come as we move along, but we're very pleased that the bids that came in were significantly under budget, over 2 and 2.5 million cheaper than the engineer's estimate. So we are continuing to work. Our road crews are busy patching holes, trying to make our roads safer. So, you know, overall, we're doing very well. I wanted to use this opportunity too to have Jamila come up. Jamila Saka is our housing coordinator, and we have a very special project that, thanks to you and your foresight, has been moving ahead. And we wanted to update you on the status of that as of today.
Good morning, members of the board, public and staff. Like Harry said, my name is Jamila Saka, and I am the Housing Programs Coordinator for both the City of Hollister and San Benito County. And today I would like to give a brief introduction regarding the Affordable Housing Development River View 2 and how the public can gain access to information related to the project. First off, we would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your support for the River View 2 project and continued effort for affordable housing in San Benito County. The project is led by the local nonprofit agency, Community Services Development Corporation, or CSDC for short. Community Services Development Corporation's mission is to pursue affordable housing for the low-income to moderate-income residents of San Benito County by fostering strategic relations with the local, state, and federal agencies. CSDC has served our community since the 1980s in various capacities, all with the goal to address the needs of our residents. The nonprofit operates solely in San Benito County and is located at 1101 San Felipe Road. San Benito County and CSDC have worked collaboratively to have the once vacant county-owned site become an affordable housing development. In 2017, the land was sold to CSDC at a minimal price, and in 2018, CSDC completed the demolition of the site. Additionally, in 2018, San Benito County applied for the home grant, which was awarded 1.1 million to serve as the first-time homebuyer grant to assist the future homeowners, which was recently approved by your board last meeting. The project has greatly demonstrated the efforts between San Benito County and CSDC, where the county has worked expeditiously to assist and help the planning process move forward and move quickly and move more streamlined compared to other projects. The River View 2 development is located off Sawside Road and Hospital at 3100 Sawside Road. The development is a self-help project, which means future homeowners will help construct not just their house, but help construct the entire community. The site will include 24 single-family homes for very low and low-income households. The Community Services Development Corporation has an updated website, and we encourage all individuals to sign up and be part of the interest list. There is no available application yet, but when you join the interest list, you will gain access to information more immediately. The website is selfhelpsanbenito.com. Again, selfhelpsanbenito.com. When you're on the homepage, click the menu dropdown and choose Self-Help. From there, you will see more specific information about the project, including benefits, main qualifications, and frequently asked questions. Towards the bottom of the page is the interest form. Please click the link, fill out the requested information, and click Submit. You will receive an email confirming receipt of the interest form. To date, the majority of those on the interest list are current San Benito County residents, and the goal is to, again, maintain those who live in the county to be able to afford living here and maintaining residency here in San Benito County. I hope you can hear me through the mask, but for members of the public, and we would love to have you check out, again, selfhelpsanbenito.com. Due to current COVID-19 restrictions, CSDC's office hours are currently limited, and they are encouraging the use of the website for their information. I just want to thank you again for your continued support for the project, and we're looking forward to beginning the process too. So, thank you. I don't know if there are any questions. Additionally, the CSDC executive director is on the line, so he can be able to answer anything as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry and Jamila. We have another announcement out of our county council's office.
As far as item number 16 on the consent agenda, the PACE program requested changes to the, a couple of minor changes yesterday. So I uploaded their requested changes, and they're all minor. The only one that we're requesting not to be accepted is the section, a minor change to Section 7.1 of the resolution that we're requesting staying, staying the change, staying the same. And they're primarily related to, there are a couple of places it was related, named Fig Tree, and they've changed it to Dividend. So if you want me to go through those, I can, but I've also uploaded it to the board's packet.
Thank you, Barbara. That's all the announcements we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, now we'll go to board supervisors, Supervisor Peter Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to give an update. I know Supervisor Gilio had been asking, so I got together some notes to share about the COG. I know it's not exhaustive, but we're gonna have later on Veronica LaSama have a little bit more, or, you know, probably be able to clarify a whole lot more if there's any questions. So COG is collaborating with, so one of them is the interchange, so they're collaborating with VTA on the 10125 interchange. If successful, the project could go to construction next year. The project cost is estimated 100 million. This will reduce the backup on 101 and make the area safer and commuter time shorter. There's actually info on bt.org/sr25 if you have any further questions. And then there's, there was an agreement to not allow a left turn on Bolsa Road, and then COG and the CHP agreement for additional enforcement. So basically, that's to avoid a lot of that gridlock and that Bolsa Road connected, connecting point to 25. Santa Clara County looks like, initially, they had mentioned it was gonna be implemented, I want to say in May, but obviously with all this COVID stuff, it kind of put a delay, but it looks like now it's June, July, when they're gonna start implementing that no-left turn. And then Highway 25 value analysis is concluding in the next several weeks. COG initiated the study with Caltrans to identify more cost-effective solutions to improve the highway. And then a draft summary report with the alternatives will be prepared as part of the process. So, number four, staff presented a draft of the transit and rail study to reduce congestion on the Highway 25 corridor. We are reviewing three options for feasibility, and a final report with recommendations will be before COG at the, for approval in June, so our next meeting. And then Measure G, Measure G has received, raised approximately 8.1 million so far since it first started collecting in April of last year, 2019. And COG has secured $5 million in state funding to match Measure G. So that's the SB 1 Local Partnership Program. And then Measure G allocations for local road repairs will be distributed to Samuel County and the two cities for road repair projects that will be underway this summer. Allocations are based on a formula that was approved by the voters in 2018. So I know us as board supervisors had Measure G, the Quick Start Fund, and we all know which projects we're working on. I know I talked to Harry about the project on my district, and that's gonna be worked on. It looks like, hopefully, by springtime next year. But there's some partnership there with the city and even the high school, because they're looking at basically making that a whole lot safer than it is currently, which is gonna... That's pretty awesome, right, that we're working inter-agency to have a good outcome for our residents? So, and then, yeah, and then we just want to thank the County Express staff for continuing service during the shelter in place. So most of our transit service is suspended at this time, but we are providing rides for essential trips. So our next meeting will be 6:00 PM instead of 3:00 PM. There was a change COG agreed to a little bit later meeting to try to make it more accessible to the public, effective June 19th. So if you plan on attending or just even, you know, if you want to give input, then obviously that's, the changes to be more readily available to the general public after, you know, instead of 3:00, 6:00 from now on. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I would add, as the other member of the COG committee, that Mary gave a list of the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 roads. Tier 1 is where the funding's available, ready to go, and actually, the City of San Juan, City Hollister, San Benito County already have their projects. One of them is 101 East of Road and a couple of the roads on Anthony's District and Jim's District on Tier 1. Funding ready to go, Tier 2, it's more of a P&amp;E kind of funding for construction. And Tier 3 is the wish list, the five to 10-year down the road. But those projects, projects coming along as the money is becoming long. And we did discuss that because Highway 25 is not being built now, those monies should be going back locally to fix our local roads, and the entire board, COG agree that it should start happening that way. And so that's why through Supervisor Gilio's efforts, we'll make sure that today's presentation, we ask Mary or Veronica, what's the status of the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3, and when will money start coming into San Benito County? So we'll wait till her report to come in, we can ask more questions. Supervisor Batello?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first thank you for having a moment of silence for George Floyd. I think the events of this past week was really telling and really hard for the whole country, especially as we were kind of fighting through this COVID-19 crisis. But this really exposed a source of pain and suffering amongst, you know, a population and racism in our country that is unacceptable. And it created a lot of anger with, I think, all of us that witnessed that tragedy. And we really need to look at ourselves, everybody needs to look at themselves as far as how are we going to end this and stop this senseless racism that is prevalent in our country. I don't believe as a whole that, you know, that law enforcement is like that. It was just, it's a, one guy is a bad apple. You could just seen it, see it in that film clip. And, but we're all paying for it, and it's something that has gone on for too long in too many parts of our country. And, you know, I really hope that we learn from this. Leaders need to develop policies to, you know, prevent these type of events. And I haven't seen too much of it, come out of it this last week, and that's been very disappointing. Silence is not a solution to this. And, you know, I certainly hope that, you know, all law enforcement or our leadership is taking a hard look at this and how can we correct this? How can we, as a people, treat other people with the dignity and equality that they deserve? We're all Americans. Moving off of that, I want to thank Ken from the Ag Department. I saw him last Saturday. He brought out a few boxes of masks. He's working on a Saturday and making sure the ag workers had masks. And I was able to utilize a box for some, a crew that I have working for me right now and, you know, made sure that they had some masks for their families as well, you know, when they head on home and keep everybody safe. We do have this COVID crisis that we're all trying to work through. And the last thing I want to report, Supervisor Hernandez and I had a, I thought was a very successful workshop with the faith groups. And, you know, fortunately, they're be able to start some in-house services. And what we learned, though, was that, you know, there's quite a, that's just one small step for them. They also have a lot of programs that they're falling short in the, you know, additional steps, services that provide a lot of help to our youth. And, but we've taken the first step. There is concern about their congregations, and they're optimistic. They've been very innovative. And I wanted, you know, I think Supervisor Hernandez and I expressed that the county wants to do whatever we can to assist them and inform them as far as what's being allowed as the state moves to stage three. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start, Chair, thanking you for your moment of silence for George Floyd, and I appreciate Supervisor Batello's comments as well. The video that, if you haven't seen it, is, most of us have, is shocking, horrendous, and, you know, disgusting. And I'm proud of our local law enforcement leaders that stepped up nearly immediately and said that this is not acceptable. This is not how law enforcement's gonna treat anybody, and especially folks that we're in charge of taking care of. And I really appreciate that. And it's not just San Benito County law enforcement leaders that did that, but I see it from all over our area, and frankly, most of the nation is standing up to do that. I want to thank you all for doing that. I support, and I believe that this board supports 100%, you know, peaceful protests and anybody that's out there doing the right thing and expressing their opinions. Sincerely appreciate that. And, you know, I think any of the lawlessness actions maybe just are gonna cause a further divide and destruction in our community in a time when our community is already divided and trying to grapple with this horrible, grapple with this horrible situation. So I encourage everybody to peacefully protest, express your opinions. If I can help in any way, please don't hesitate to let me know. I encourage our law enforcement leaders, I see Captain Taylor sitting in our audience today, to look at this critically and develop policy, training. Think about what the future looks like for law enforcement, and hopefully, we can, as a nation, come out of this whole and grow. And that's all I can say. It was just a, it's just a horrible, horrible, disgusting time. And that incident, not only the actions, but the enactions by other officers that were on scene as well. With that being said, fire season is among us, and we're starting, you guys see the planes, CDF flying over. There hasn't been as much public outreach. It's not anybody's fault. It's COVID. You know, in the past, we had District 4 meetings down at Bellato Park to have the fire, fire folks out to talk about how important it is to prepare your property. Take a look at CDF's website. A lot of really good information. If you have any questions at all, our local CDF crew, as well as our fire marshal and local Hollister PD that serves our, I'm sorry, Hollister Fire Department that serves our county, has been amazing. They'll even come out to your property and help you do assessments and tell you what needs to be taken care of as far as clearing brush, trees, that sort of thing. Think about the defensible space around your house. Think about all that stuff, because as we are rightfully so distracted and dealing with nationwide issues and crises, we need to remember the local deals as well. And then we also have PG&E power shut-offs. We're gonna have a presentation on that, I believe, in the June 16th meeting. So we'll have PG&E come in and do a presentation for us about the public safety power shut-offs. So that's, that'll be coming, but remember that and plan for, plan for those as well. Last year, I believe we only had a handful of residents that were actually impacted, but it's something nevertheless that we should pay close attention to. And one other thing I wanted to highlight is I sat in on a Zoom meeting, the board meeting for our local fair. And if you guys aren't aware of this, the fair across the state, all 58 counties are in a world of hurt financially. And they've, our local fair has already laid off all of their part-time help, and the director has gone to halftime because Dara is an amazing person, and she did that voluntarily to try to save the fair. And they're working on creative ways, whether it's a drive-through showing, a drive-through fair, maybe drive-through food. You know, they're trying to think of ways to be creative to raise money and to continue to support our youth and our community. They're looking at doing a virtual livestock fair show. So essentially, you know, the kids will raise their animals like normal, and then they would, the way I understood it, they would hire a company to come in and essentially be like a Zoom auction, for lack of a better word to say, a virtual auction. So they're being very creative. Any way that we can, as this board, support our fair and our fairgrounds to historic institution, not only locally, but in our state. And I would really encourage us to consider doing that as a county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. All right. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Besides 15, right, Barbara? Besides fif- fifteen, right Barbara?
Sixteen, I believe it's sixteen.
I'm sorry, thank you, besides sixteen? No one from the public? No? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to, uh...
Turn my mic on. I'll move to Gilio, move to adopt the consent agenda with the changes mentioned by staff for item number sixteen.
Medina, second.
Motion by Gilio, second by Medina. All the fairs say aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, thank you. Now we'll go regular agenda and number twenty-six is Health and Human Services, update on the Corona nineteen. Do we have Tracy or?
Tracy.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
And do we have Dr. Boggi on the line?
Dr. Boggi?
I think he was going to call Dr. John Bligh, he did bring him up to the front. I will, we'll move forward, so I'll have him come on after we just went. We're trying to have him be in the beginning and next. So, um, good example, Mike, please. And next one, please. So at the last, uh, board meeting, we were asked to present some information on updates of COVID-19 data from our epidemiologists as well as some, um, stated information on contact tracing. Um, Lynn Mello, our Deputy Director of Public Health, Mallory Schmidt, our Epidemiologist, and Anita Alvarez are, are in, our public health are on the call and will be providing an update. Um, Mike, you can, uh, don't think you can stop sharing ours for him and let Mike share their screen for their data. Mike, go ahead and share your screen. There we go.
All right, good morning, board.
Good morning.
Uh, we'll check, they approve. Um, I, I'd like to introduce Mallory Schmidt, our, uh, relatively new epidemiologist and, and new physician that we've had thanks to, uh, your approval. Thank you so much. This, this physician came just in time for us. Uh, so Mallory has been doing a fantastic job of, um, putting together data for us through this whole, um, outbreak and pandemic. So she's going to provide you with information, uh, that was requested last week. So we'll go ahead and let Mallory cover the data.
Okay, good morning, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
So I'm just going to start with a quick, brief overview of, uh, the COVID cases in our county. So we have total of eighty-eight cases still. Um, eleven of those are active cases and seventy-five have recovered from this illness. Um, I also want to touch on the testing sites, where these people were tested. Um, twelve of our eighty-eight cases came out of our local OptumSerb site, which is great, so, uh, we're really glad we have that up and running. Uh, and then seventy-six of our cases came out of hospital or clinical tests. Um, next, I want to talk about our epidemic associated with our local outbreak here. So we have, um, so, um, for the epidemic, we typically use a symptomatic onset because it lets us know when cases are more likely infectious and potentially will spread the virus to other people. That's one reason why, um, we use the onset date. It's the onset date of symptoms or when they started to feel sick. Um, so looking at this graph, we can see kind of two peaks here. Uh, we have our first peak in mid-March, um, at three fifteen and three twenty-one. And then our second, third peak we have, which was just, you know, a half ago, five seventeen to five twenty-three. Um, the big thing I kind of wanted to point out here was that as we did start to reopen, our local economy, uh, at the beginning of March, we started to see an uptick in cases, which was completely expected. And I think the biggest thing, and I think March, yeah, I said May, excuse me, um, when we reopened, beginning of May. Um, the biggest thing we wanted to do was to prepare our local hospitals. And, um, we feel we've done that and we will continue to work with our hospital and monitor that situation. Um, so moving on, I understand that some of us had questions about positivity rates, um, based on weeks. Um, but I'm just going to speak to this. I don't have anything to show about positivity rates so far, um, but I wanted to talk about them. And positivity rate is based on the total number of people who have been tested. So just to kind of clear up some things, it's not based on our population. It's based on the people who have been tested. So those that are positive out of the total people tested, which I'm sure you may not understand, but just to clear. Um, another thing I wanted to focus in on was this last month or so, we started our, we opened our testing site, that was our rollout phase. And we did see a huge increase in people who tested. We doubled, tripled, even, you know, more than quadrupled our number of people tested in these last four weeks, which is really great. It helps give us an idea of how prevalent this virus is in our community. Um, and maybe, you know, it's not something that's fresh and blood fire, which is a good thing, but there's definitely reason to exercise caution. Um, we don't want to see people, say, going to the hospital and, you know, overwhelming our hospital. Uh, we've not, not yet, so I'm not going to say. Um, so, um, we have tested a total of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one people so far. Um, that is in large part to our public health educators here who've done a really amazing job reaching out to our community and helping people, find people that are texting. And also wanting to thank our partnership with the LAC who have also helped benefit us in that sense. Um, so again, our positivity rate overall is three point two percent. Um, it's possible that this number is greater just because we haven't tested everybody in our community, um, but that's one that is for now. Um, so yeah, I think we'll just go down to the bottom of the second page right quick. Um, I wanted to speak briefly about, you know, what position we're in compared to our neighboring counties, which we all kind of interacted so much. Um, and we are in a position compared to some of our neighboring counties. I know that our case rate looks a little overwhelming, but, um, just that number will continue to increase as cases increase. Um, and I suppose, um, we're not seeing a big difference, though our positivity rate is really what matters. And also though, um, our testing rate is far greater than our neighboring counties, which really is a great, you know, attestation to what we're doing here. And lastly, I want to touch on contact transmission.
Tracy?
So contact transmission, also known as person-to-person transmission. Like I mentioned earlier, we have eighty-eight cases. Forty-six percent of those are, excuse me, forty-six of those are person-to-person transmission, that's over half of our cases. Um, and in looking, breaking that down a little further, we can see that sixty-one of those forty-six person-to-person transmissions, sixty-one percent of those reside within the same household. So these are people spreading it to others within the same household, other people they left with. Um, twenty-three percent of those person-to-person contacts are work contacts. So these are people who were closely together and these are people who may be carpool together. Um, and then it's just fifteen percent are, um, non-household contacts. So these are people who don't live in the same house, who maybe are still related in our family, but they don't live in the same residence or their friends visiting each other. Um, so I wanted to touch on that right quickly, um, and I'll segue into Anita Alvarez, who is our public health nurse in the league, with case management nurse. Um, and she will talk about contact tracing.
Okay, um, thanks Mallory, that was really wonderful. Um, good morning, board. Um, yes, um, we can talk about contact tracing, break it down, the nuts and bolts, the nuts and bolts of it and why it is so, um, important and impactful. So, uh, contact tracing is, uh, an important strategy and practice that public health departments use. Contact tracing is not new, it's been used for decades. We've used contact tracing to prevent and contain communicable diseases such as tuberculosis, measles, um, HIV. So it is tried and true. Um, with the, uh, given the increase in coronavirus or COVID-19, um, outbreak, we have seen the need, uh, to increase our contact tracing staff. This is, um, you probably have heard all over the country with advertisements for, um, contact tracers. Here in San Bernardino County, we have been able to train county employees. So we have some social work staff and some health educators that have jumped on board and are trained and, and helping us do contact tracing. So how does contact tracing work? The contact trace, tracing, um, really begins with the actual positive COVID case. So once a last confirmed positive COVID case has been identified, a public health nurse will, um, contact the, uh, case and interview them. And we ask them to recall, um, all of the contacts that they have been in touch with, we've had, they have had all of the people they have been in contact with for the period that they have been infected. And so we're looking at, we're asking them, so two days before you, you were infectious, up until fourteen days after, we kind of identify when their symptom onset was. When did they start having symptoms? And then we ask a positive case to go two days before that, fourteen hours before, because the data shows that you can be infectious before you have symptoms. And then, um, and then we go out from the last date, uh, uh, from their, at first symptoms. So we're capturing this infectious period. So once that, uh, that positive case has identified these contacts, they must be close contacts. And so to give you some background, a close contact is somebody who has had at least fifteen minutes of close contact, more than six, closer than six feet, and usually does not wear a TPG or a mask. So we're not looking at somebody they might have, uh, had like three minutes in a, um, a, a, a place with business, it's a quick passing or, or something. It really needs to be at least fifteen minutes. And hence why we have some of these household contacts. So, um, once we've identified these close contacts, we can help our contact tracers. And they work closely with the public health nurses who are working with, um, the, the actual cases. So the contact tracers will then reach out to these contacts and, um, let them know that they have been exposed, uh, other exposure issues to COVID-19. We will kind of do, the contact tracers will do a kind of a general health assessment kind of screen with them on the phone and let them know that we will be monitoring them for symptoms of COVID-19. So we provide them with information and education around COVID-19. Um, and we also ask them to self-quarantine. So, and the reason why we help have them self-quarantine, and this really is the big, um, reason why we do contact tracing is because during, when they self-quarantine, we're having quarantine for fourteen days. And that is the time in which if they are going to become infectious, they will be infectious. So if they are on quarantine, which means kind of on, um, sheltered place, kind of in lockdown, we're asking them to stay in their home, we're asking them to stay six feet away, six feet away from other, um, individuals and just become closer to please wear a mask or just wear a mask if they're in their household. So by quarantining these individuals during the time when they may be infectious, right there, we are able to reduce the spread of, uh, and decrease the spread of, um, of COVID-19 because they're not out in the public. Um, so, um, we have our, um, contact tracers give them all this information and, um, you know, during the quarantine period, we under, oh, and also I wanted to kind of cap on what Mallory said, we are seeing that, um, a lot of the contacts, um, are, do become po- get become positive cases in the house, from household contacts. So that is a trend. Um, and because we are doing, now that we have the new testing site at the Vets Hall up and running, we also encourage all of our contacts to go and get tested. And, um, it's really wonderful because at least ninety percent of them have gotten tested. And as Mallory mentioned, sixty-one percent of those contacts that have gotten tested have actually come back testing positive for COVID-19. So, uh, you might say, oh, well, well, that's increasing our numbers. But in actuality, again, because they were already, um, kind of locked down, on doing the quarantine, they were not out in the community, um, potentially infecting others during the time when, when they could. So contact tracing does work. Um, we understand that by putting, uh, people on, um, on, on quarantine for fourteen days and those that are cases, putting them on isolation, that those technically out of work for about two weeks. Um, so we do work with them, our contact tracers work with them to help mitigate any kind of hardships they might be going through. We, uh, we can provide basic resources like food. Uh, we have done, uh, assistance applications, referrals to PG&E. We worked with, um, the City New Workforce and Development Program to help, um, our families in need. We've been able to shelter, uh, an individual who was not, could not be housed at the time. So we, we kind of, our contact tracers are really involved in their lives, they're trying to, um, support our, our contacts and our cases to stay in isolation and quarantine by helping to reduce the hardships. Um, I wanted to just talk about like some of the, uh, teams of being a sensible contact tracer. Um, it really requires the contact tracer to have first an understanding of, uh, the coronavirus or COVID-19, disease process, infectious period, um, and that kind of information. So they need to provide that information through a contact. And most importantly, the contact tracers need to be able to engage a, a contact. Um, contacts are like, if you called them like, why are you, why are you calling me? What do you want to know? So we're asking them to trust us. So really, it is about the relationship. It's about what you say and how you say it. So our contract tracers, um, come from a place of being professional and providing factual information in a non-judgmental way. Um, we also have a caring and kind of, uh, genuine approach to working with individuals. Um, we let them know that we're going to be monitoring them and kind of in contact with them for at least two weeks. Depending on a contact's health status, if we're working with someone who might be more fragile, an older person, maybe have some pre-existing conditions like diabetes or asthma or, uh, an immune disorder, we might be calling them every day. If there's somebody who seems relatively healthy, we might be calling them every few days. But we will be involved with them for the periods that they're on quarantine. It also helps that, um, we are able to address our contacts in their primary language. And here in San Bernardino County, we're fortunate to have all of our contact tracers be bilingual Spanish. So that is just as easy engagement right there. In addition, um, we support individuals staying on quarantine and isolation by providing letters to their work, um, letting them know that they're going to be off for two weeks or however long this designated. Um, and that helps ensure that they'll have a job to return to. Um, also, um, we are the official agency that puts somebody on restriction, that will isolate or quarantine our cases or our contacts. And, and thus we are the ones to determine when they are no longer infectious and release them or clear them from, um, from, um, being on restriction or consider them recovered. Uh, let's see. Uh, I just wanted to talk about the methods that we use when we contact trace and when we contact our cases. It is, you can tell by now, a lot of talking. We, we, we communicate with them, we converse by phone. Um, and we have been very successful. Sometimes we test it, that's a big, it ends up being the preferred method, uh, you know, way. It's important to be able to talk to them because we're assessing how they sound, are they short of breath, do they have a cough? We're kind of doing the best assessment as nurses and contract tracers as we can just by our verbal conversation with them. We do not use any app, we don't have any GPS tracking mechanism or any other mobile tracking device. It is purely by phone. And, um, I'm just, I'm really proud to say that we have really good success rate. Um, since the beginning of this pandemic, from our first cases, we have been able to reach out to every case and, um, contact them, do our investigation and interview and follow them during their period of, of, um, isolation and their period of being, um, sick or not well. Um, and the same with our contact tracing. So far, all the contacts that we have identified from our positive cases, we have been able to reach out to and, and give them information, uh, have them self-quarantine and again, have them get tested. So, um, I really feel like we're, we're kind of batting a hundred percent right now and, um, and that feels, um, really good. And, um, I think that kind of wraps it up there. Thank you, Mallory and Anita. And, uh, are there any questions?
Questions from the board Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, so hearing, and thank you for that update. Um, I had a conversation with Tracy and I appreciate her calling. I had a conversation with Tracy, and I appreciate her calling me and us talking about it. So I know that there's been a lot of concerns from the public, and some of them, some of them it sounds like they've been, they've been addressed. But nonetheless, I mean, it's under the assumption that a lot of the folks that are doing the contact tracing are obviously well-intentioned folks and trying to follow protocols. And, you know, I know there's still concerns of folks that are, you know, with the privacy of people, and there was concerns about, and there's a lot of information out there, right? So it's not even to say that it's true, but there were concerns about being, families being separated, people being pulled from their homes, you know, and so there's a lot... Nonetheless, I talked to Tracy about it, and she answered a lot of my questions. But I'm, I'm pretty sure there'll be more, and that's why it's important, if anything, to have an ongoing conversation with Tracy and, well, with our public health officer, which I haven't had a chance to have one conversation with them just yet. So I had a question. Thinking about the shelter in place, I mean, I know we mentioned, you know, that it's been successful. But I have a question that I think is a really valid question. Is there a possibility that the shelter in place could be cause for an increase in infections?
Has it caused an increase in infection? No, actually, I feel like sheltering in place has been super, it's worked very well. Again, your point, if you have a case and they're sheltering in place, then they're going to be infecting only those in their, in their households. But because everybody, because the household is also sheltering in place, those individuals are not going out into the community, into the workplace, into the stores, into the public setting, and infecting others. And it's important also to remember that we do have a lot, you know, at least a fourth to a third of our positive cases that do not have symptoms. Or again, they may have such mild symptoms that they're not even recognizing it as COVID-19. So by doing this overall kind of plan to shelter in place, we're capturing all of those individuals that might be infectious and containing them to their homes. So therefore, it was a very effective mechanism to help mitigate this rate.
And with the questions that you guys asked, is one of them, have you, have you been really strict with following the shelter in place lockdown? Have you stayed home, didn't even go to the grocery store? Maybe you do online grocery shopping? Like, to what extent? You know, the point is, is to what extent is the guarantee that there's no possibility that in between the shelter in place, they still got infected? And then even more so, when you think about the, you know, the possibility of basically, let's assume someone stays home and is home the whole time, like, they don't go anywhere. There's obviously a high possibility that they've never been exposed to this. So you're saying that there's not a possibility that this person never being exposed will go out into the general population and not now be susceptible possibly to getting this infection? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think everybody can be susceptible, again, because we don't really, you know, we can't tell that everybody, not everybody has symptoms. So the idea is, if you're, you know, and the idea of shelter in place was really to kind of put a pause on, on the community transmission. And the reason for that is we didn't want to repeat of what happened in New York and even in Italy. When you put a pause on the transmission, you're, you know, that whole idea of flattening the curve or decreasing the curve, you're, you're allowing, it does not allow for a spike in cases because people are pretty much sheltering in place. So yes, eventually people will go out, this is what we're seeing as we open up, and people are going to be in contact with, with individuals who might, might have COVID and not even know it, or have the trials, this is going to happen. The difference is, because we did this pause and we sheltered in place, you know, we're not going to hopefully see a spike, and we're not going to overwhelm our hospitals and our healthcare system. And when we overwhelm those systems, then that's when we have the capacity to have a lot of death. So it was very effective, and as Mallory pointed out, we do expect to see some little spikes in numbers here and there, and hence the reason to have more contact tracers, to have teams ready to go, find out where that spike is, get on it, visit the cluster, contain them, follow them, and hopefully, you know, decrease the spread of that continuing. Does that, any other questions?
Yeah, it does, thank you. So, so another question is from January, you know, it was assumed that this virus was around to, obviously up until now. So from January to March 18th, is there a measurement of what the infection rate, you know, did we ever have a surge beyond our ability to control from January to March 18th? And then from March 18th to today, what is the difference between the March 18th shelter in place to today and January to March 18th? Because January to March 18th, there was no rules, no regulations, nothing. And we thought that this was around since then. So I'm curious, what is the difference between the two timeframes?
So from January to March 18th, you're right, there wasn't a lot of activity locally, even within our entire state around COVID-19. We also didn't have really any testing publicly available, that's for certain. So that's one reason for the difference in timeframe. The virus really was not spreading as fast in the community while we are pretty certain it was here. It wasn't spreading. And our first two cases were really not related to the outbreak we started to see at the start of March.
Okay. And then another question I had...
Supervisor Hernandez, I'll let you one more question, then I'll have to go to the other supervisors.
Oh. So can we have another meeting where I can address all my questions? Because I have a lot of questions.
Absolutely.
I yield my time to Supervisor Hernandez.
You got it? Go ahead, Supervisor Hernandez.
So, so when it comes to the positivity rate, I mean, it was mentioned, it's based off of the total number of people tested. And in the last four weeks, we have quadrupled our testing. So, you know, you said there's, so I want to know, is there a, is a difference in the positivity rate between the original case rate and now quadrupled in testing? So, you know, we're quadrupling our testing, what is the case rate difference? Is it the same? Is it higher? You know, is, what is the difference?
It's relatively the same, with a couple of, you know, different things that we can look at. Like, we've already talked about community, or excuse me, person-to-person transmission, the majority of our contact transmissions being within the same household. So that's where a lot of that spiking cases comes from. These are, you know, multiple households experiencing more than, more than one case, more than two, sometimes more than three cases. But our case rate, it kind of, it jumps around a little bit, our positivity rate, excuse me, can jump around a little bit, but it's nothing that we would start ringing the alarm about for.
Okay. So, and, and I appreciate, yeah, that, I understand what you're saying. So then, then the next question on that, you mentioned that the positivity rate could be greater because it doesn't include the rest of San Antonio County population. But you just said the positivity rate is only relative to those tested. So I'm trying to understand that statement. Can you, can you explain that statement a bit?
So sure. What I meant by that there's a possibility that number could be greater, that's because, you know, most of the time, people generally are only going in to get tested because they might feel unwell, so they may feel they have this virus, or some just out of curiosity. But there's certainly, you know, plenty of people who, A, just don't want to be tested, or B, perhaps they were tested at the wrong time, and they actually had an infection with this virus, but totally got over it. These are known as kind of asymptomatic or mild cases. So those, we cannot really gauge, or we don't have a number for those individuals who haven't been tested, or who were perhaps positive but just were never tested. So that, yeah, so it could be higher.
Okay. So, so, well, and I'm just, because I'm just trying to understand the definition, because you just said positivity rate is, is basically, it's only, what is it? It's only relative to those tested. That's a pretty simple statement to understand. So it's a positivity rate, it's based off of the people tested, that's it. So then you're, from what you're telling me, though, that it, it could be higher, that means that the positivity rate's a little bit of a different definition, right? Because it's including other folks that you're not considering? I'm trying to...
No, no, because that positivity rate is only reflecting those numbers tested. What I'm saying by say it could be higher is I'm just expressing for caution, that there are plenty of people who probably did have this virus and recovered, who we didn't ever know had. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Just expressing that for caution purposes.
Okay. Yeah, and then, I just had one more question. So with the contact tracing, you mentioned it's been around for a really long time. Has it ever been done with the virus?
Yes, yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so on that note, is, is the protocol different, right? If you're trying to contact trace someone that has HIV, obviously, that's only through like bodily trans, bodily fluids, then what would be the difference between tracing those folks and tracing people that are potentially with the virus?
The protocol really isn't different. What you're doing is you're looking at identifying contacts, whether it be a person who has HIV, who's saying to me, have been in contact with, who's had, they've exposed to others via the route that you get exposed to HIV, they're giving us that contact information. We're just going to say, based on that infection, it's important to know the infection and the disease process. We're investigating whether or not, what their level of, you know, that they have been infected, and then providing them with what they need to do next. Do they need to get tested, is there a complex medication that they could start? But really, the process of contact tracing is the same, it's tailored to each, you know, bacterial or viral, each communicable disease, based on that, that process of infection and, you know, treatment, if there is that. So, so practice is the same, but tailored to the specific communicable disease.
Got it. That's all I have. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Edgar, do you have Dr. Bogie on the line now?
I am here.
We can hear you.
Morning, Dr. Bogie, thanks for being on the phone.
Morning. All right. So let's see, Hazel Hawkins update. Hazel Hawkins, your community hospital is doing a great job, I think, overall. It's uncharted territory. We would love to be able to teleport to the end of this thing and see how it pans out. But unfortunately, we take it day by day, and just, we go at it like that. We remain vigilant, and we're providing a safe place for both people that are infected to come and patients that are not infected. We want to make sure we provide a safe place for them as well, and I think we're doing that. Just subjectively, to go back to that last question, we, we are seeing more symptomatic COVID patients coming into the ER. So that's just an observation, whether that means there's more activity, just because we're testing more people and the numbers are up, or whether it means there's actually more cases in the, in the community. I can tell you from an ER physician, we've seen many more people with coronavirus come into the ER in the last three weeks than we have in the last three months. So that's just a subjective update. Again, those patients are not getting admitted, there's currently no admitted patients to the hospital. We discharged our last patient last week. Let me see, what else? Testing updates. We also, we also are testing, we've got in-house tests, we can run, we can process the tests inside the hospital. We've got two machines that can do that. We've got an Abbott machine and an Cepheid machine. The testing strips and mediums for those, the supply and demand for those, the demand's high. We've had, we've run out of some, we've got other shipments, so we're, we're still operating in-house. We also have the ability to test for the serum antibodies. We haven't really opened that up a lot. We don't have a way to do it for free, like the county has provided a free testing site. The hospital doesn't operate like that. The system that America has created is a for-profit hospital system. Hazel Hawkins is so different, there's really no way for us to create a free testing site. We've got people that, you know, need to get paid hourly, and there's mediums that have to be bought and so forth. So we can test for the serum antibodies. If you're interested in that, we can make that available to anybody. However, understand that there's going to be some associated hospital fee with that. Let's see, update on the curve? I think the shelter in place did flatten the curve. I think we need to understand what that means. It doesn't mean that we stopped this virus in its tracks. It doesn't mean that we're going to see fewer cases. It means that we are going to see, we're going to see the same amount of cases that spread out over more time. So the whole idea of that shelter was not to overrun the hospital system, so that we didn't only create a bunch of coronavirus cases, but we also stopped, you know, unnecessary deaths from motor vehicle accidents, from heart attacks, from strokes and so forth. So we remained open, we kept the hospitals open, we kept the ability to see patients and treat other diseases as well as coronavirus. So that was the whole idea of the shelter in place. I think that may have been forgotten, that the sheltering in place was to flatten the curve, not to stop the coronavirus. It was to spread the cases out over a distance, over a period of time, so that we could remain functioning. We all expect to see increases in cases as the shelter in place gets lifted, and I think that's, and that's expected, and we're dealing with that pretty well. And that was pretty quick on my part. I guess questions, probably better to open it up to questions now.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Patel?
Yes, I, I'm going to have to be one of the first to agree with Dr. Bogie as far as how the shelter in place has worked out in our community. I don't regret for not one instant that we put that in place when we did. I think that was just great foresight by our health officials. And, and, you know, looking back, I think it was completely necessary, and I thank those that moved us in that direction. You know, one of the things I'm getting concerned with is certainly the uptick of, you know, caseload the last few weeks that we've seen. People do get complacent over time, and that's why I try to, whenever I address anybody, emphasize the necessity of maintaining, you know, social distance, wearing your face mask in public places, and I think it's, it's serving us well. We've read where there was somebody in one of our local stores that had an infection. And with contact tracing, I think it's absolutely necessary to, you know, see the extent if it's been passed on to other families or other parts of the community. And it says a lot for our health department to have the cooperation of the public and the trust. And we must, as leaders of the community, maintain that trust. And I think we've done a good job with the information that we've made available, but yet protect privacies too. And I think Dr. Bogie answered the question that I always ask him just now, as far as with this uptick of caseloads, and it was probably more than what we had at the beginning of this crisis, how we were doing at the capacity of the hospital, and whether or not, you know, how many beds that were being utilized, and the impact on, on the emergency room. And I think you covered that pretty well, doctor, and I really appreciate your work and the partnership you have with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Patel. Supervisor, kill you.
Let me just, let me just, let me just add a couple of things. The hospital, I'll update you, we have a COVID area that we've created. It's a negative pressure environment, and we've utilized the old obstetrics area of the hospital, which is an unused area. So we keep that area maintained, just in case there is a surge and we need to use it. Regarding the shelter and its effectiveness, I think it was great. However, I've got a wife and kids, and let me tell you, I know that they are ready for this thing to, we live in Monterey County, and they're chomping at the bit to be out and about, and I totally understand that, and I myself am too. So I think it is time to start opening things up, and I think San Antonio has done a great job at that. And lastly, let me just add this in your comments. I think people, this thing is so politically charged now, you know, social distancing... I think people, this thing is so politically charged now, you know, social distancing, masks, all that stuff. There's a, if you wear one, if you don't wear one, it means you're, you know, with that political party, or you believe this. You know, it's extra control. Wearing these masks in public or in a store, it's about trying to stop the spread. So if you're a carrier, it's about, the idea is that you're not giving it to somebody else by wearing a mask, or you're lessening that chance. And even if you don't believe it, I'm not here to argue that at all. I just would like you to respect your fellow citizens that may believe that that could help. And if you wear a mask, I think it's a symbol of respect to your fellow citizens. And I think with so much civil unrest going on right now, that's probably a very important message to display to your friends and family and fellow citizens, is that you've got respect for them. I think the mask is a symbol of that right now. So anyway, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilli?
Dr. Bogie, you just answered both of the questions that I was going to pose to you. I wanted to pose them in a neutral way. Number one was, how is our, I don't want to call it, for lack of a better term, a COVID ward? You have space set aside, because as we move into Phase 2.5, we learned that we had to have, I think it was 35% or somewhere around that area, correct me if I'm wrong, of available beds at our local hospital. And I'm sure when we're done talking with you, my questions are going to be for the health department about moving into Phase 3 and clarifying that for our community, because there's a lot of confusion about that. But I'm sure there is going to be requirements that we make sure our hospital has X amount of availability, X amount of PPE, X amount of maybe testing, you know, all these different things. So I really appreciate you, Hazel Hawkins Hospital, and you as the director of the ER, making sure that the hospital, your hospital board and everybody else is prepared and ready so we can move into these phases, because without the public-private partnership that we have with you now, we wouldn't be where we're at. We're, I don't want to call it light years ahead of other counties, but we are way ahead of other counties because of all the hard work that our public health department has done. Our community has made a huge sacrifice, and then also our public-private partnerships, especially with our hospital. So thank you for that. And then the other question I was going to ask you, without leading you in any particular direction, was your thought on masks and you just, or facial coverings, and you just answered that, so I won't belabor this any longer. Thank you for coming to our meeting today and providing us with these updates.
Thanks for recognizing that relationship. We appreciate it, and we're happy to be part of it. And as far as the masks go, I'm leaving my personal opinion out, but I'm just saying, I think in general, it's a good idea to wear them. For, if only for the symbol of respect for your fellow citizens. Unless you want me to comment my personal opinion, which I guess, I guess I can't help myself. I think they do work.
Be careful.
I think they're probably a great idea, like at Target and, you know, the grocery store. If you're out jogging, I think it's totally unnecessary to wear a mask. If you've maintained, you know, I think that's the key, right? I see lots of people, I live by the beach, I see people walking on the beach with them. I don't think that does anybody any good, except for you're re-breathing your carbon dioxide, and I don't know if that's good for you. But certainly, in a grocery store, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you. We're going to open up to the public?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do have a few more points we need to make. One is Tracy was going to elaborate on Stage 3, so she was going to highlight that. We also had a request from the public and your board to talk a little bit about behavioral health and 5150s as well. So we have Alan Yamamoto waiting in the wings to present that information.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment a little bit on what Dr. Bogie mentioned. And I would say honest, so yeah, I would say, and honestly, what I've heard from Dr. Bogie, I appreciate and I respect, I really do. I don't agree 100%. I think the mask order is, it's a confusing thing. I mean, I just read an article, right, and this is just speaking even outside of my own biases. It's as I'm reading and dissecting information, that there's, ultimately, there's an issue with the mask order when it comes to what the doctor actually even mentioned, which is the carbon dioxide element liability. I have staff that, you know, wears a mask eight hours a day. I don't know at what point there's liability there, there's issues with that. I do appreciate the sentiment that he's sharing, that it's a sign of respect for other folks. I mean, I wear, out of respecting folks that might be worried about it, but at the same time, it's also become a sign of disrespect, because for those that don't wear it, you have people out there, and I'm not saying that's a lot of people or everybody, but there are people basically being discriminated against because they're not wearing it, and they're having their own bias, right? We're talking about the civil unrest and Mr. Floyd and the tragedy with that. There's got to be a balance and unity in our community, and right now, that's not happening, because even this mask itself is having people being attacked, as if there's not even, you know, they're not even, it's under the assumption they don't have a valid reason why they can't wear one. It doesn't matter. They're just upset that they're not wearing it, and they, I mean, there's people that walk by. I've been outside of my shop by myself, and people are honking at me, telling me to wear a mask. You know, it's like, it's a little bit, ultimately, at that point, I feel like it has been polarizing this mask, and to a certain extent, it is a sign of something to some people. Some people, it is respect. To some people, it's not so much. So I just wanted to weigh out the balance of that. And I know the article that I read mentioned that it's actually, oh, it was from the Attorney General, from the federal government. He mentions that a mask actually discourages six-foot distancing, which six-foot distancing is the number one priority, according to, you know, the consensus in our state, is where, if you're six-foot distancing, then that's the best thing versus being right next to each other with a mask. And I remember even driving by my house, and I saw city workers all clumped up together in a mask. Granted, they were by a hole, they were working, but nonetheless, I mean, it's just, it's a confusing thing. It's an ongoing dialogue. It needs to keep happening. And if anything, I'm trying to stress is that we shouldn't, we shouldn't attack people that wear them or that don't wear them. We should have that consensus to support folks and discourage any kind of bias against anybody who's not wearing them. Because I know that, you know, right now, even on that same element, the business community is being attacked because they're considered selfish. They're saying that these folks don't care. All they care about is their profits and their pocketbooks. That in and of itself is a selfish statement, because by default, that says, I don't care if you're suffering. I don't care if you're struggling. I don't care if your business collapses. What I care about is that you protect my life over your own, as if their necessity doesn't matter to take care of their families, as if, you know, and that's part of the concern with the shelter in place has been folks are at such a desperate place, and that's what I've shared to be consistent, they're at a place where they're struggling, and they're probably doing things back doors. I'm hearing about folks doing things behind closed doors to try to make some money so that they could basically take care of their family, because they can't afford to otherwise. And at that point, I don't think they're thinking about sheltering in place rules and safety and all these other things that we're trying to be very proactive about. So I'm just trying to balance the conversation, not completely respecting Dr. Bogie's sentiment. Like I said, I don't 100% agree, but I appreciate the way that he balances statements. I really do. So thank you, Dr. Bogie.
Yeah, I mean, you bring up all of, you know, this thing is multifaceted, right? We've got a public health crisis, we've got a civil rights crisis, and we've got an economic crisis, all intertwined and almost fight each other at times. So there's really no great answer to this thing. And like I said, I wish we could teleport to the end of this thing and see how it all ends, so that we could navigate it with more intelligence. But I think, you know, overall, the county has done a great job, and we just keep, you know, going forward with this thing. And keep in mind, oftentimes, we read in the papers, pure opinion, lots of opinions here. I think the truth is, we've got a public health crisis, a civil rights crisis, and an economic crisis. Beyond that, maybe all opinion. My thoughts included.
Thank you, Dr. Bogie.
Okay, Edgar, let's go to the next phase.
Tracy?
Sure. So thank you, Dr. Bogie, and thank you, public health staff, for presenting that information for us. I just have a couple of other brief things that we can come along. I just wanted to bring your attention to our dashboard where we added a new tab at the bottom left corner, identified as new cases, so that you don't remember all the cases of the previous day. Also, on the surveillance report or the community report, we added the testing information at the bottom right corner, how many positive tests are coming out of our testing site versus how many are coming out of the hospital and other health. I just wanted to bring your attention to that. So I wanted to provide also a brief update on advancing into Stage 3. There's been a lot of confusion around the governor's message last Friday. So on May 29th, during a press conference, Governor Newsom made some announcements about moving through the reopening of stages. It caused some confusion locally. According to Governor Newsom, in a clarifying call with the California State Health and Human Services Secretary, Dr. Mark Galley, which I was on that call, the state will continue to provide guidance on how businesses and towns reopen. So at this point, we are not opening anything further in Stage 3 outside of the beauty salons and barber shops. Once a new Stage 3 industry-specific guidance has been issued by the state, the businesses will need to review the guidance and create some type of activity. So there's going to probably be some summer camps and those types of things that may fall into Stage 3 guidance. They create some type of plan, follow the guidance. Plans don't need to be submitted to us, but they should be available for their employees, volunteers, and county officials if we're requesting. It's a system for our self-certification, is what we did in the Stage 2. The Public Health Department of Culpage and Assessor of the Health Officers will decide when the county may proceed to open these specific sectors. And so, based on our data and our epidemiologist's report, the health officer will give us the green light to move forward into the Stage 3 guidance when it comes out. They anticipate that the first type of guidance expected to come out is childcare, summer camps, and possibly some gym guidance. That was what the governor had indicated, but we haven't seen anything as of yet. We are ready to receive the guidance from the governor's office and work with the businesses to move them forward, just like we did in Stage 2. We'll continue to monitor the COVID-19 data in the county to ensure we show continued stability and demonstrate the degree of preparedness required, and that's been achieved, so that we can respond if there's a need for us to scale back or address the issue. Next slide please. Some of this, I just, some of it, oh, can you go back?
Go back.
Back one, please. Right there. I just, some of the industries that are listed in Stage 3, they're not limited to this, but they are listed in here. Nail salons, tattoo parlors, gym and fitness centers, libraries, indoor other children's museums, art galleries, public pools, playgrounds, community centers, movie theaters, zoos, hotels, and colleges. The governor has indicated the industries in Stage 4, which are big venues, concerts, outdoor concerts, concert halls, theaters, live audience, sports nightclubs, and festivals will remain closed until the pandemic is over via vaccine or viable treatment program. His last message to us, if that changes, we, you know, we have to wait and hear from him and the doctors. The county is working diligently to dispel COVID-19 by staying home, practicing social distancing, practicing good hygiene, needing face masks as well as ordered by the county's health officer. With the reopening of more businesses, the increase in cases, we must continue to practice these mitigating steps. If the county has an influx or positive cases, we may not be able to move forward as quickly as desired as we continue your part in slowing the spread of COVID-19. I know that the face covering order has been a hot topic, and unfortunately, Supervisor Duski is not available today for the meeting, but he is continuing to assess the need for the order versus a strong recommendation. And I hope to speak with him tomorrow on where we're at with that evaluation. But in the event that we're able to reduce the order to a recommendation, we every county are prepared to do so, and I just want to keep you informed of that. We did this morning receive a letter from Dr. Angel, the state health officer, with some clarity, which I just indicated in this report. And we will issue this as well, so people have some information further about Stage 3 guidance. We apologize for the confusion, and if there are any industries that have opened or are trying to open outside of what has been approved, where assets need to be closed in our office, if you have questions regarding that, we can help you walk you through that. On the next slide, please. Mallory touched briefly on the testing site data. I just wanted to put it out there. I think she talked about the numbers already, but this is the testing site data. As she indicated, we've tested a total of 1581. I believe this is, yeah, this is the, okay. We have 12 positives and 554 pending. Next slide. So this is a report that Austin provides us on a weekly basis. This is the first report we have. It will be posted to our website. It's released to us every Tuesday night, so we will be posting this data on our website every Wednesday. Our state public health will post this to our site, so I encourage everybody to take a look at it. This is a little bit small, but it does have some more enhanced data about people who are asymptomatic or not going into the testing site. It breaks down efficacy. And so I'm not sure I can see it up yet, but it will be posted tomorrow for review.
I have one.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, Tracy, now that we've had some time under our belt with 2B, Phase 2B whatever, and we opened up a number of businesses, first it was restaurants for outdoor dining, curbside service from other businesses, and from then, we moved to a better stage where we have indoor dining and things like that. We, and we've seen a little uptick in caseloads, but, you know, I have friends in Monterey County and family in Monterey County, and a lot of their caseloads is agricultural workers. And so, and that remains kind of a concern, I know, for this board and our community, and you're working on it and done a great job. But have we seen where, as we open up, that we're opening up more cases? Or is it statistically negligible? And we're kind of doing, we're opening up very thoughtfully, and we're continuing to take more steps, and, but we're not seeing any sort of repercussions from that? That's kind of my question, if you can answer that.
Sure, I'm going to let public health comment on that. Lynn, can you have Anita or Mallory or yourself provide an update on questions?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Okay, I'll try.
I can ask it really quickly. What he's asking is the uptick in the cases, is there any correlation between us opening up restaurants and outdoor dining, et cetera? Or what are we seeing as the trend in the uptake? I think it was mostly essential employees and possibly a family group, if you can clarify that.
Yeah, sure. So I do publish a graph on the second page of my update that's posted on the website Monday through Friday, it's for exposure source. And sort of what we're seeing as we opened up, there was an uptick a little bit in community transmission. But ultimately, the largest uptick is that contact transmission again, so person-to-person transmission. So we don't see a real clear correlation with reopening our businesses and stuff to point back to like, oh, you know.
Great.
Yeah, there hasn't been, I would say, sufficient enough time to really say that, but it doesn't appear so far that it's really due to a reopening. But we just need, continue to urge people to, you know, be cautious.
Okay, yeah, because I...
Opening up of, you know, for contacts in the community, we're looking at them, what's going to happen two weeks out? Because this is the time when people are interacting, it's essentially affecting others if they are affected. And then to do theater, we're going to see those individual tests positive or negative. So it's kind of a long, we'll know it's going to be after every time we open up our house events, what's going to, what's going to happen?
Yeah, because I think it's, I think it's really important that we continue to take steps forward and open up our economy and open up businesses in a more normal environment. And, but, you know, we certainly need the data and the information as we take these steps forward. And, you know, I think Supervisor Hernandez and I have been working hard on the Roadmap to Recovery Committee, and we want to continue that outreach with our business community and encourage them that we're partners in this, and we don't want to take any steps backwards. We want to continue going forwards, but also have the confidence that... We want to continue going forwards, but also have the confidence of the public health in mind and that we're doing this in a very strategic fashion. Thanks.
Question, Mr. Tr. Yeah, I have just one simple question, Tracy. So in your, in your presentation, you basically mentioned the, you know, the governor's update. And in that update, it talks about phase four, and obviously it's excluding large gathering spots, concert halls, and theaters. And then as far as in the end, it says they'll remain, in the end of the statement, it says it will remain closed until the pandemic is over via vaccine or viable treatment program. In the update that I got from the governor, it also includes herd immunity. And you guys excluded it in this, in this presentation, so I'm kind of curious why that was.
May have just been an oversight of copying and pasting into the PowerPoint. I could take a look at it, but there was no attention behind excluding it. I copied that straight out of his message, so.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, I mean, just, I just know that there was a little bit of a difference and I was just curious if there was a reason or maybe it was accident.
Probably just, no, it's not my part, I apologize. I can take a look back, I did it last night, so.
No worries. Thanks, Tracy.
I cannot let you know for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, and then continue to the fifty-one fifty?
Yeah, I'd like to invite Alan to discuss his part. Alan Yamamoto?
Hello?
Hello, Alan.
Hi, okay, so we're behavioral health, and I want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to give you an update on behavioral health and what's been going on with behavioral health, clearing our virus situation. I have Juan de Cerris here with me also.
Good morning, everybody.
He is a management analyst, you know, person for those people. For those people that are sitting and listening, I am Alan Yamamoto, the behavioral health director, and I'm going to give you an update on what's been going on with behavioral health. Excellent. So as you can be aware, behavioral health is deemed an essential service. So we never close. And I really want to commend our staff for dealing with the fact that we never close because we always had to have staff here delivering some services. And, you know, as you might imagine, that they were also dealing with their own personal situations. I know some had unexpected child care response stories that came up. It's true, there is. But we were able to maintain adequate staffing and still assure that we would maintain contact with our existing caseloads as well as allow for access for our new clients. In doing that, improvisations had to occur in order to ensure both safety for the public and safety for our staff. And as I know the board is aware, we have very compacted quarters that we're living in here at behavioral health. The reason why we're going to New York City. So what we did is when we do start staffing, and some of the people work from home, we have people rotating back and forth from home to the office, moving locations. We had anticipated that the shelter-in-place order would occur prior to it actually being implemented. So in preparation for that, we had our staff prepare a paste for the existing caseloads. We tell members of those clients, knowing the importance of maintaining contact with them. So even if they were at home, we were working from home and maintaining that contact with their clients. We also had our medication staff, our psychiatrists and our nurses, go through their caseloads and figure out what people we could prescribe to for longer periods of time, meaning that they would get longer prescriptions instead of thirty days, for example, ninety-day prescription, knowing if there could be someone capturing for access to pharmacies. And then Esparanza is a more open center. You know, it's on San, you know, San Diego, excuse me, Main Street. And we had to close that completely because we had a lot of walking traffic to meet the windows contact there. Next slide. So in offering all of our services in different ways, we still maintained our full array of services. So everything that we offered when we were open, we continued to offer availability for, even during our improvised service availability time, including our twenty-four-seven crisis line, our crisis intervention and stabilization services, which are very important. And then I really want to commend the staff because in our fifty-one fifty situations, it requires them to go to the emergency room. And from the very beginning, they were going to the emergency room and going there and noticing that the staff there were wearing masks and recommending that they wear masks. And this is prior to the time when ninety-nine-five was a household work. So all of this has been a very fluid process of adjusting and still being able to maintain access for our clients as well as maintaining safety for our staff. Let's go to the next slide. So as you know, behavioral health is both mental health and substance abuse services. So for substance abuse, those staff were probably the most impacted in terms of our living quarters here in the office. Most of them share offices, and they do that because of our space issues and the fact that they do a substantial amount of their work through group contact rather than individual contact. So when they do groups, they're rotating into our group rooms and doing it. But they not do groups, of course, they're in shelter in place. So much of their work was run by telephone, and they stayed home and did that work. Actually, there was an uptick in the amount of contact that happened through the phone and teleconferences. We used a combination of both teleconference and Zoom meetings. Next slide please. So as we ensured appointments, we knew that some people would have to actually see us in person still. For example, somebody coming for their initial medication appointment. Our psychiatrists are not comfortable just prescribing to somebody because they've never seen them before, and they really need to see that person, at least without initial appointment and do their assessment and make their visual contact with the person and make sure that prescribing is done appropriately and safely. So we implemented screening questions for the clients. One of the obvious questions would be whether or not they had food for the cough. We also ordered some handheld temperature scanners. So we were doing temperature checks as well. All this time, still trying to be cognizant, only seeing people face-to-face is absolutely essential. Of course, we had some people walking in for some of their other types of crisis situations that needed to have in-person contact, and then we would do the screening. As much as possible, we contacted our ongoing clients and encouraged them to use our tele video conference as well as our telephone contact. Next slide. So what we saw is that shelter in the counties overall saw a decrease in services. And this really began when shelter-in-place occurred. Because most of our colleagues were also delivering in their county behavioral health department services from these alternative ways. What we found was some of the technological aspects of people utilizing Zoom, people using televideo conferencing, other methods, and just telephone contact. Kind of some clients probably were not comfortable making contact in that manner. Some clients were not familiar with how to use the technology. Some clients probably even had difficulty because their data packages didn't allow for that kind of volume of streaming on that. So all of us experienced some downward trend in our client volume, given of these alternative methods. Excellent, please. So as an example of that, as I started to become curious of how we were going to measure, what is the exact impact of that downward trend? Our best way of measuring that was through Medi-Cal revenue. And Medi-Cal, of course, is the bulk of coverage mechanism for most of our clients. Our Medi-Cal clients, we are a safety net public service. Many of the clients are publicly sustained, and Medi-Cal is their form of insurance. So when shelter-in-place started, we started a city affect course at the implementation time. So I had our fiscal staff pull out the fiscal figures. From March of twenty-twenty, we didn't have a full month, so I had them pull the last two weeks of March. And what we saw, the exact revenue amount for those last two weeks of March on our Medi-Cal billings came out to ninety-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. And we took a comparison of the time period in twenty-nineteen that matched last week, twenty-nineteen. The filling was a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety. And you see the substantial difference. And that's demonstrative of that data for utilization of services. And then the next month was April, where we actually were able to look at a full month. So looking at the full month of twenty-twenty, where we're dealing with the virus, we have Medi-Cal billings of a hundred and seventeen thousand four thirty-eight. To take the same period of time, April of twenty-nineteen, it was a hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and twelve. So you see a substantial difference there. The good news is that we're starting to see an increase now. And that increase started in May. And I think it's demonstrative of part of the opening up. And it's also indicative of people becoming more familiar with utilizing these alternative methods of accessing services. But we looked at our May billings, and we're up to two hundred and thirty thousand for the month of May on the mental health side. And on the substance abuse side, we have forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty, which is actually, we're seeing enough hits that we could not expect in substance abuse. Interestingly enough, some of our substance abuse clients are actually more comfortable making their contact through phone and televideo conferencing. So, but I'm not rather interested. Next slide. So what we're doing currently, most recently with our community, and some of the issues that they're dealing with related to mental health and substance abuse. So last week, we've been in constant contact with the county office of education. And they have also given us some referrals for students who are in contact with at home, if they do teaching at home, that might require, you know, health counseling. So we've been impressed with them, and we've been dealing with some of those crises according to the services from them. But we also did a presentation for them last week. They had a monthly teachers meeting. And we did a PowerPoint presentation with dialogue and opportunity for questions back and forth on how to handle crisis situations for students, how to access our services even through alternative means and any person if necessary. And then allowed for some questions. And then did a little bit of discussion on planning for when the school year starts, not fully knowing what that will look like, but knowing that it probably never looked like anything that we had before. Now, I'll let Juan share a little bit about what we've been doing on our social media presence as well.
Thank you. So we've made it a point to reach out more through social media lately just because more people have hands on their hands and they're able to be on Facebook or just online, seeking resources or information. So this crisis hit kind of at the right time, I guess you could say. During the month of May, we have what is Mental, May is Mental Health Month. Generally, for May is Mental Health Month, we have a lot of activities for the community, out in the schools, at the farmer's market. We make a visible presence to engage with the community, to provide them information as well to get input from them on what they think of our services and where they feel more services are more focused and needed from other firms. Because we don't have that face-to-face opportunity anymore, we've moved over to a virtual platform as has everybody else. For the May of Mental Health Month, we decided to do a weekly webinar where the public can join and be interactive. They're able to ask questions that we would answer them live on the webinar. So we did four weeks of webinars that we did through Zoom, and we've, so we've posted those presentations onto our behavioral health website. First week was wellness routines for uncertain times. Second week, we partnered up with Suicide Prevention Services of Central Coast, where they gave very helpful information on suicide prevention. Week three, we had building agility and strength and mobility and isolation. And the last webinar that we had was the last week navigating a mental health cycle. These presentations that we've done, we've done our case managers and our licensed clinicians that were, again, available to the public for questions. We've also been active on our Facebook page. We've been sharing a lot of information that is related to COVID, however, can be translated to any other situation. For example, we've talked about alcohol and drug use, how in terms of high stress, it's easy to indulge in those substances more and the dangers of that. We've also shared county resources through our Facebook page to engage students that way. On top of our regular weekly posting, we try to make it a point to publish a positive quote related to mental health by famous people in history and currently, just to try to reach people out there, always with their contact information, always referring the public back to our county website. On our website, we've also been able to post list of resources that are available not only by the behavioral health department, but as well as the state in general. For example, there's a California coronavirus response. So we've been able to put a twenty-four-hour suicide correction hotline for them, the website, twenty-four-hour domestic violence hotline, all information that is tied to behavioral health in one place so that the public can access it a little bit more easier. And lastly, I do want to make it a point that we have kept in contact with our clients that were regular at Santa Ana Center. You may know that many of the clients don't really have a lot of ability to socialize at other situations and other formats. So they relied on the Santa Ana Center for their cooking classes, for various presentations to help them with their lives. Because the center has not been open, our case managers were able to go out and check in on them in person. And this picture that you see on the presentation here is actually one of our case managers going out to one of the senior communities and handing off a flower pot with seeds and a little bit of dirt for them to grow. That way, they can engage in throwing the plants, and they know that they're being cared for. The same thing with other groups that we have, our LGBTQ group. We've also made it a point to try to reach out to students and also partner with other local LGBTQ groups to join resources and try to, to offer help to any of those who need it.
Next slide please. All right, thanks Juan for that. So as we can just see, next steps, and as we see everything opening up again, we know that we will probably be modeling methods out there that are being employed by dental software for medical providers. And we, as a health provider, will also be looking to them for ways to implement in a manner that makes sense for us and still keeps everyone safe. So both the social distancing issue will be very important for us and also ensuring that we don't have people that are ill that are coming in here. So what we anticipate is, as we open up, we'd be controlling the flow of people into the buildings still. So we can assure that we have the social distancing issues taken care of. We are planning on probably having to do some screening questions still about whether or not anybody is showing any active signs of illness. That might even include taking temperatures. I'm not sure about that because I know some people might find that intrusive. So I haven't thought all of that through yet. And of course, we'll continue to encourage phone contact. And of course, we'll continue to encourage phone contact whenever possible. Esperanza, as Juan was sharing, is a very important social outlet for people that sometimes as a part of their symptomatology tend to isolate anyhow. So we know it's very important that we get Esperanza Center open again. We will again have to ensure that we can maintain social distancing there. We're starting kind of a soft opening this week where we will phase in the opening hours until we're backed up full speed. And we'll continue to monitor and make adjustments according to what we see happening. But this is all very new for us. And again, I really want to commend our staff for stepping up, maintaining their loyalty to the competitive jobs and being available for their clients. And, you know, we look for further guidance certainly from the county administration, the public health, on our ideas as we start to expand. I know a lot of people in the community are incurring stress over all of this, as are all of us. And fortunately, the most that doesn't rise to the level of actually becoming a mental illness, I think there's an amazing amount of strength and resilience in this community. And even though many people are unhappy, I think people for the most part are slogging for this like everybody is. And hopefully, things will end up okay in the end. Nobody knows for sure what all that looks like. It is anticipated that there will be passive demand, that there will be an increased need for services. We're hearing all of that from our colleagues, we're hearing that from our professional associations, that remains to be seen. But I think we've done a pretty good job of pivoting in the direction that we need to. And we anticipate that we'll be ready for when that finally comes. That concludes our presentation, but we're open to questions. Questions, Supervisor Gilli.
Yeah, Director, thank you for the thorough explanation of the outreach that you're doing. I would encourage, I also sit on this, on the Mental Health Advisory Board as an assignment from this board of supervisors. And I can tell you that there is a lot of thought and planning going on and there are community members involved in that thought or planning. I would just encourage our mental health professionals to think as creatively and outside the box as possible to try and capture as many people, youth, you know, teenagers, adults that need this assistance because they are out there and we need to make sure that they have an easy path to reach somebody when they need help, whether it's telephonic support, perhaps the Zoom-type support or in-person support. So whatever you can do, Alan, to make sure that that's happening, I encourage you to continue to do that. One of the questions that kind of spurred this conversation from last week was the amount of 51-50, which is, for folks that aren't familiar with the WNI code, is a 72-hour hold that is either placed by, you know, a doctor or several people, but traditionally known by law enforcement, when they receive a call of somebody in crisis, oftentimes they're required to bring somebody into the hospital or a mental health facility for a 51-50 hold. How do those numbers look year over year, Director? And what would you, would you see when you looked into that?
Yeah, that is rather a surprise for us. And I think we're not experiencing anything different than what I'm hearing from my colleagues in the county. 51-50s have actually been down during this period of time with the virus. Certainly have been in some pockets that we've heard that there's actually been increases. We understand that the Kaiser system has expressed that they've had increases, but for county behavioral health overall, what we've been hearing is she's been a downward trend with 51-50s. There's a lot of hypotheticals and anecdotes stories of why that might be. I don't want to project any of that into anything that might sound like I'm implying their facts, but I've heard people say things such as maybe law enforcement is more cognizant of not burdening the hospital ERs during this time. I've also heard that perhaps clients are afraid to take them to the ER. I don't know whether any of this true is. I dig into that and thinking about it further, there are a lot of parts of that that don't make sense to me and there are some parts that make sense. I don't know what causes the trend, but I fully anticipate that there will be an uptick again as things start to become normal again. And we'll see some trending upwards back to numbers that would be more like what we have seen before.
Okay, let's make sure we're ready for that and ready for any, if you, if you are foreseeing an uptick or your industry is foreseeing an uptick, we need to prepare now. And if you need resources from this board to prepare for that, let's, let's prepare for that and be ready so we're not caught flat-footed, so to speak. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Gilli. Supervisor Hernandez?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's actually along the lines of what Supervisor Gilli mentioned. I appreciate him asking the question about the, what the differences with the cases. I'm curious if, what the, what kind of things do you see, Alan, that you, to measure what, what, you know, basically when people go in or call in, they, they, they're, they're at a severe, you know, at a crisis stage or they're at a stage where they're dealing with, with heavy depression? Is there any data related to like what the impacts are with the situation with, with the shelter in place or is there any info that you have? I know you said that there was actually a drop. Is there any other things that you guys could do to measure why that is?
We don't have any other methods to measure exactly why that is, other than what we've been made aware of from our client contacts as well as information from our colleagues. And I think for the most part, it's been people not being familiar with the technology, perhaps not having the data plans to support it. But we've been reaching out too. We've been proactive in trying to engage people, particularly our ongoing clients. And just make sure that we stay in contact because we know it's got to be a difficult process that we've been isolated so long.
Thank you, Alan.
Supervisor Obatala?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Supervisor Medina?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Let me open up to the public. Are we done, right? Yes. Okay, open up to the public.
Press star nine if you're on your mobile device or raise your hand. We do have one you would be given. David, please, there we go. You will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
So, what a difference a week makes. Thousands in the streets, no social distancing, riots, looting and burning of businesses that have been shut down by a dictator. Where is he now? Where is the guy that you have finally followed during this unfair and unconstitutional lockdown? He's MIA. But back in March seven, March 17th, he was in place in the National Guard on alert to support COVID response against us. You followed his lead by enforcing dictatorial edict. Now our cities are out of control. Where is your leader?
Sir, will you please stick to the coronavirus presentation?
Excuse me?
Please stick to the coronavirus presentation.
I am.
Thank you.
So where, so where's the leader that you were willing to take our rights away from this COVID response? You followed the wrong person. He isn't it, which makes you the same. This COVID-19 lockdown BS is over. It's done. I will not watch our cities be burned and looted while I am forced to social distance and wear a useless mask while I lose my job. It's over. Every law I've insisted needs to disregard any and all orders pertaining to this lockdown. You cannot be taken seriously as long as you follow this incompetent dictator in fact and matter. By the way, the mask order was April 28th. We had a spike the week of May 17th. I say it was the mask order that did it. Prove me wrong. I have seen numbers posted in Facebook designed to keep people scared and hiding. That should stop. I told one of you to correct it and you refused. That tells me what your intentions are, to keep people thinking they are in danger. We have a 97.4% recovery rate. I saw 81% posted. So that would be a 19% death rate? That is irresponsible and dangerous. The fact is, the recovery rate is likely in the high 99% range due to the amount of people talked about it and did not know. It's over and I encourage every business and citizen to reject this order. The health department should immediately rescind the order. They should be ashamed to be following the order of such an incompetent governor. Our sheriff's department posted how concerned they were with Mr. Floyd's treatment and I feel the same way. Too bad the sheriff's department never stood up for all of our rights publicly. I guess that's not politically expedient. And I will be homeschooling if this continues at the school level. I will encourage all parents to do the same. No funding for incompetence. Nobody in my family will ever get a COVID vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, please state your name for the record.
Hunter Cunio, resident of San Diego County. Dr. Bogie mentioned earlier that we have three crises going on, public health crisis, civil rights crisis and economic crisis. But really, I see this as all one crisis. The situation we're in right now has a name. It's called anarchotirany. It was a term coined by political philosopher San Francis and it refers to a dictatorship without the rule of law. When the state tyrannically regulates citizens' lives, yet is unable to enforce fundamental protective laws. So we have equal citizens during this lockdown, placed on house threats for months, forced to be muzzled and masked, told exactly when and how they can open up their offices, being told when and how they can worship in their churches. Yet this same government has set a zero-bail policy for criminals, released over 3% of our prison population, and are now watching and even encouraging in ways the looting, rioting and burning taking place in our city. The same leaders who said, keep your kids away from playgrounds and parks. These are the same so-called leaders that you have said we should disperse to, ensuring public health and safety. Their silence is better than co-conspiring at worst with this assault on civil society is made obvious to their illegitimate authority. So now that it's obvious that these people have no concern for the safety of Facebook citizens, combined with the data that continues to pour out daily, that this virus is not the legal threat we were told it was, the hospital not being overrun, will you at least lift this mask order today? We are not asking you to admit you're duped. We're just asking you to do the right thing moving forward. We're being told that we're just two weeks behind Italy this whole time. Now the head of San Rafael in Milan Hospital there in Milan says this virus clinically no longer exists in Italy, Italy, same with Spain. So now that COVID is out, we are here with a whole new set of problems, no masks and social distancing, now that we're witnessing the unraveling of social fabric of our communities and countries. So my question is, I want to answer today is, after all this disruption that's been allowed by the state, where is your line? Where would you draw the line and refuse to comply with the unjust decrease of a government that has lost its ability to perform its most basic tasks? And saying that wearing masks is a sign of respect or symbol of respect, that's not a legitimate argument. A symbol of respect, so that we're doing this as a, as a virtue signal to others? Not, not acceptable. The majority might be on your side. That's not legitimate either. It's not a good argument. I'm not running for political office, so I can say it. Masks are easily duped because they are so set up on media hype and fear.
Thank you.
Next speaker, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Commander Marcellus from Hollister. I just want to once again thank the board for continuing to balance all of the competing activities, public health, economy, social justice, in a, in a very thoughtful way. So, I follow several health providers who, as a practice, have been dealing with what we call grand rounds on social media. Two just recently, this last week, UCFS and Stanford Health did a presentation regarding the demographic analysis of the patients that they're seeing. And it really confirms what we see makes it why. Whether we're talking infections or death rates, there's a much higher burden on minority communities, either African-American or Latinx, depending upon what geography you're talking about. 38 to 50% more likely to be infected if you're from one of those communities and two to five, two to five times more likely to die if you do get infected. In San Francisco, 73% of the hospital cases were hospitalized by masks and 90% of those prefer Spanish or first language. In Stanford, the number is about 60%, again, far greater than the prevalence of the community as a whole. Most of those work in a central industry and they're more likely to have lucky generations in households. That data is, it's because the hotline is near here in San Diego County. Latinos make up 60% of our population, yet 80% of our current, of the cases, confirmed cases come from that community. So I would ask the public health department, if we can give some additional demographic breakdown on, also the, of that 80% of the, you know, the positive case rate, you know, either by income, preferred language, whether in the central businesses or not, and see if we can match, you know, match that up against who's getting tested. My, my strong suspicion is that it's not the, the social advantage of the free testing out of veterans, they're not the same folks that are at the highest risk of being infected. I would love, love to get an update on that from the, you know, from the health department, kind of going forward. The last thing I would say is that there's been a lot of talk on social media and even here about individuals taking their own decisions about what risks they're willing to bear. And I'll just point out that in this case, you know, whether a business owner or somebody from a middle-class environment who, you know, fairly comfortable, the risks that you're willing to bear are, are actually going to be formed not by you or your friends, but by social communities that are at the highest risk.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please unmute yourself. Rob, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Thank you. With regards to contract, to contact tracing, I'm concerned about privacy, record-keeping and growing the bureaucracy and the cost that go along with that in San Diego County. I would like you folks, when appropriate, to address that what happens during the contact tracing dialogue, the person doing the investigation finds out that the individual having COVID-19 came in contact via a disallowed activity, like going to a church. Is that information then used to start legal proceedings against the church? Please think about these things very carefully. The other thing I wanted to address is masks are a symbol. It's just a horrible message. It was sent here in this meeting by the doctor and in an article by the same person in the needleway. That is what mental health is for. If masks are only a symbol, this is not where we want to go with society. We need to see people's faces. Children need to see people's faces. They need to see smiles, frowns, anger, concern, love. And if, if, if these masks are only a symbol, let's find a different way to do it. The other message that I got confused about and I wish the board of supervisors would address is, the doctor said breathing your CO2 is bad for you. You don't need to wear a mask all the time. That's a very confusing message. You shouldn't be wearing it all the time, but you should wear it some of the time. But the government choosing where, where and when that occurs, to me, it, it just confuses me. And I wish we could get clarity from the board of supervisors. And most of all, I really do wish we could get rid of the mask order and especially keeping contact. The message is, children under the age of 13 should not wear masks. And I think that there is some confusion out there in the community about that, including its impact in some businesses and the rest of it. Thank you very much, as usual. I do appreciate that. I do feel that each and every one of you actually do listen to the comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hi there, my name is Courtney Evans, and I'm owner of Kamal Yoga Studio in town. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. I first want to say that I am not a healthcare professional, but I am a wellness professional. From what we've heard for the past 78 days is that our public health office is completely just reading down memos from our government. I've asked questions to both doctors as our public health officers about the danger of breathing in your own CO2. This disease is a lung, a respiratory illness. Deep breathing has been shown proven science that it strengthens your lungs. Deep abdominal breathing encourages full oxygen exchange. Inhale, oxygen. Exhale, carbon dioxide. I hold my breath and do breath exercises all throughout the day. It is not safe for me to breathe in that much CO2. I take pride in my wellness and prevention methods that may be different that of the focus of our public health office, but that is my right. Over the last 60 days, I have been harassed by not wearing a mask. Yesterday, I went into Togo's, ordered my children's food. On the way out, a man that I could not identify because he was wearing a mask called me a privileged bitch as I was leaving Togo's to my car. Last week in the grocery store, I was followed for two aisles before this grown man who was twice my size belittled me, screamed at me, and then went and told the store manager. This is a symbol, as the doctor stated. And as the doctor stated, I am to be looked at as disrespectful for not wearing one. I've invited every single person at the health office and of the board of supervisors to attend my class, either virtually or in person, so that they can experience the wellness and prevention that myself and my business provide. Now my community is harassing me because of my choice to stand for my medical freedom. What we're seeing in this country is a disconnection. We're able to label people so that it's easier to identify, and then we have our leaders of our community spouting off their opinions that these symbols are reckless and disrespectful and careless if I don't follow them. I will continue to stand up. I will ask who holds the liability of all of this disconnection. At some point, you have to stand up and say that freedoms are free. Accountability is huge. The people have no means to hold the public health office accountable.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
We just add a few, I've heard a lot of anger. Last thing I wanted to do is Dr. Bogie.
Actually, Doctor, Doctor, hold on, sir. Doctor, this is a public comment. This is the opportunity for the public to comment to the board, and staff cannot respond. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, please state your name for the record.
Hi, good morning, and this is Elia.
Go ahead, Elia.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry for Courtney that has been harassed, but that's her choice to go out there and be. And I do feel that it is disrespectful. I wear the mask for you. I don't wear it solely for me, but I'm wearing it to protect you. I want to thank the board of supervisors for the work that they've done, for having issued the shelter in place early on. And I believe that's why the numbers are where they are. And the numbers are increasing because more people are testing, and it is for free. And for all the energy and the time that is taken by Supervisor Hernandez to try to find fault in not having the shelter in place and not wearing the mask, I would encourage you to take that energy and go out and advocate for the farmworkers. Those are the ones that are high at risk, that are essential to our community and actually across the country because we are the salad bowl of the world, and those are the people that are at high risk, and those are the numbers that keep increasing. And I don't see Hernandez advocating for them. I don't see Hernandez going out there and saying, "Let's get them tested." I don't see him out there anywhere whatsoever, even volunteering in the community for the senior citizens and for those that are staying at home. I just hear him complaining. And look, if you're going to wear your mask wrong, if it's a half-ass statement that you're trying to promote that I'm not going to wear a mask, then say so. Don't wear the mask. Don't be a coward. Take that mask off. Don't wear it the way you're wearing it, thinking that that's a statement you're making, that it's not. What is showing the rest of us is you're not, you don't have the ability within yourself to make the decision and say, "I'm going to stand for no mask, and I'm not going to wear a mask." But right now, the way you're showing it is it's ridiculous, and it's actually the rest of us are embarrassed for you. You may not be embarrassed for yourself, but we're embarrassed for you because you're not, you don't have the decency to actually not wear the mask and say, "Hey, I'm brave enough." But you're not brave enough, and that's the thing. You stand there behind the podium, and you go out on social media with regards to how your beliefs are, and you're grabbing all these informations, and you're making up statistics and numbers that don't make any sense, and people call you out on it, and you're still continuing to come back today and sue and take over most of the questions today. All the questions that come from you, and you have questions today that were really silly and people gasped earlier when you asked the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Elia. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Elia. Appreciate your comments.
Next speaker.
Go ahead and, yes, go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name is Jessica Fraser, and I live in Hollister. And listening to what we just listened to, a personal attack against one of the board members. I have come on here, I have spoken to the issue. That kind of personal attack is what's wrong right now. The anger flowing around is what's wrong right now. I understand as supervisors that I'm actually shaking in frustration listening to that. My concern is that you have chosen, as a board of supervisors, to cover the faces of the entire community. We have seen in the last week in horror what is going on in our entire country. I am afraid to leave my house because I have three young children, and I am senseless when I leave my house. And knowing that we now have turned our neighbors into the same faceless bodies as the rioters, not that I'm saying neighbors are fake, but when you cover the entire faces and dehumanize an entire community, and frankly, it's not working. I go to the store and see people standing nearby. Dr. Deborah Burke said this was never to be a substitution, and yet everyone is using it as a substitution. People are walking right past me without a care. I shall respect, thank you to Dr. Bogie for understanding that respect is important. I shall respect by giving space, by humanizing every single person that comes past me. And no, I don't wear face covering. I suffer from panic disorder. It is hard for me to leave the house right now. So please understand, there are many in this community that would like to address the issues, that would like certain things happening, but I will not turn to personal attacks. And Supervisor Hernandez is not the only one in that room today who didn't have his mask on properly. Our mayor went on not two days ago onto Facebook and advised that if I go to a restaurant, I will have to go in, keep my mask on when I sit down, keep it on, take it off to do a drink, put it back on if the waitress comes by, take it off to eat my food, put it back on to pay the bill. All that touching of the face covering endangers you unless you're able to stand and face your hands each time. I believe that this has gone on long enough to not have a single person, not a single person, in our hospital at this time, and yet still not asking but requiring everyone, "Please move it to a recommendation and allow those that would like to continue to wear the face covering as a sign of respect or for whatever good it does to reduce whatever load in the summer, to allow that to be their choice." This division has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
If you would like to make a comment and you're participating by phone, press star nine or press the raise your hand icon.
No, none? Okay, let's just wait a little, a little while. Okay, we'll close. Dr. Bogie?
Yeah, I'm here.
You want to give some comments?
I just, I just never, you know, the last intention of my comments, it's interesting to come on and speak. You guys deal with this a lot more than I do. But what happens is people will hone in on one thing that he said and use that to their advantage or to their argument, for better or for worse. It's just human nature. But the last thing I ever wanted to do was make people angry. My comments were not that masks should be required. I guess I talked about them being a symbol of respect. I still think that they are, and I understand Dr. Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez is saying you've got the other side of the argument as well, where you've got the person that doesn't want to wear the mask, and that's their symbol. But what a strange time. I honestly don't have the answers for you. I'm not a public or civil rights expert. I am a medical doctor. I'm an ER doc, and this is my thoughts as your ER chief or your ER here in town. I was thinking a lot about this. There's a lot of things as an ER doc that I would never do that some people that weren't in my shoes might do. For instance, I love motorcycles. Before I became an ER doc, I rode the hell out of them. And through my training and through my experience as an ER physician, I would never ride a motorcycle again, only because I've seen what happens to accidents. And so if you've never seen what coronavirus does to some of these lungs, you might not be that worried about it. I have. So anyway, it's just, you know, it's just my thoughts as an ER doc. Never wanted to make anybody angry. I don't know what you should do with the mask. Maybe it should just be a recommendation. I think it is a symbol of respect, probably both ways. There's arguments on both sides. And for what it's worth, you know, I love this town. I love this community, and I'm just here to bring some great healthcare to everybody. And if I stepped on somebody's toes today, that was not my intention. I think that's the wrong message. Thanks for having me on, guys.
Thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I just want to express to you, Dr. Bogie, I don't think you stepped on anybody's toes today. You have a couple of people that have preconceived notions, and they came on here despite, no matter what is discussed here to vent. They're angry people. They don't speak for anywhere near the majority of the community. I think the community absolutely appreciates what you've been doing in assisting us through this crisis. And, you know, this, I don't, I've said it before, nobody wants to be wearing these masks. But there's some level of common sense. And we're not seeing common sense through these two or three speakers that are blasting this board and blasting our health officials. And, you know, what is so hard of wearing a mask into the damn store for a few minutes? You know, I, you know, I continue with my life a little bit. I had company over to my house this past weekend. We're sitting outside, having a cocktail, and we're social distancing outside, not wearing a mask, but use a little bit of common sense. And for right now, until we know a little bit more about how this interacts in our, in society and our community, I think it was good advice. And at some point, it's to be amended when I think our health officials feel that it's safe. In the meantime, I don't think it's that big of a burden. And it's too bad that you come on here every week and express some high level of disrespect to this board, to our staff, and that's not right. And so I continue to support the advice of our health officials. And I don't think it's a bad idea to protect yourself, protect people that you're communicating with, and show that little bit of sign of respect. But then I need to say one more thing, though, to Mr. Chairman. If I saw someone not wearing their mask, you know, I might stay away from them a little bit further. I don't see the necessity of beating them up verbally either. Courtney, that's wrong. And it's really too bad that you're going through that. And I would say something to that person while I'm wearing my mask that, you know, mind your own business, step aside, and keep your distance, and mind your damn business. So it's really upsetting. And that's kind of how we have to proceed for right now. And hopefully, we become a little bit more civil. Thanks.
Point about the people not wearing the mask. Yeah, I mean.
Sorry, Doctor, 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 not to be disrespectful, we're about to wrap this up.
Wrap it up, I'm out.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Patel.
Enjoy it, guys.
Thank you. Supervisor Patel, thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, that wraps it up unless Supervisor Hernandez or Supervisor Elia?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to drag this on too much. I know you, I would only imagine the supervisors are tired of... I just wanted to, to me, it's always about balancing the conversation. And as much as I respect Supervisor Patel, I completely disagree with him. I mean, the reality is, is the reason why this frustration, the reason why this frustration is happening is because there isn't a balance of conversations. There's an omission of truth in the conversations. It's been brought up before. We're violating constitutional rights. There's been nothing but silence from this board. There's not even talking about it. Whether you like it or not, Supervisor Medina, that's exactly what's happening. And I'm not trying, this is just to the facts. Why are a lot of states being now, the courts are actually saying there's violations of the Fourteenth Amendment? Why is there violations of basically the church's inability to worship and considered essential? There's a gambit of issues that we're ignoring. There's a gambit. And the reality is, is that's why there's frustration. It's not because I'm trying to call you guys bad guys. It's because we're not talking about it. If we ever had a session where we basically talked about this stuff, then it would be totally credible what we're, because we've hashed out the details, right? But we're not. You know, Dr. Bogie, I respect and I appreciate the comments that he's said because at least he's saying, "Look, this is what I, this is what I believe. This is what I think is right." And he considers the other side of the argument. I think that's fair. Doesn't mean you have to agree. But that's, that's the issue, is we're basically speaking off of one side of our mouths, and the other side, we're staying silent. You know, we're crushing an economy, and we're assuming that these people are somehow going to survive, and it's okay. I just got eight letters. I know you're shaking your head, Supervisor Patel. I got eight letters from folks asking us for a bailout, asking us to ask the federal government to be bailed out of still staying locked down. So we're saying, "Stay locked down," is what the governor's saying, and now go ask the government to bail us out from our own decision-making. If we're ready to make this bed, then we need to lie in it. But that's not the case. We're saying, "Let's extend this thing forever." And we're not, you know, once the issues come, as they will, right? I had a CCP meeting, Community Corrections Partnership meeting, where we talked about, "What are we going to do now? The government, the state government's going to cut our funding." Now we're saying we're going to deal with the impacts of state funding cuts. We're going to have to deal with cutbacks when it comes to the health, you know, mental health and all these different services that are necessary. I agree they're necessary. How are they going to get funded? By debt? We all agree that debt is the solution? But that's exactly what we're being asked to do, is let's get into debt to solve our problems that we created. Does that even make sense? That's why I, that's why I'm so passionate about this because it'd be different if we came to a clear resolution that made sense. But it doesn't. And we're saying, "Hey, deal with the issues of being locked down, and if you're suffering, maybe go to a resource. Who knows if it's going to be available for you?" And ultimately, now that you're broke... Uh, and ultimately, now that you're broke, uh, you still need to stay locked down, I'm sorry. That's the only answer we're giving them. Stay locked down. Alguera, stay locked down. Because there's nothing we could do. The state government said, hey, uh, you guys need to stay locked down. And that's the solution we have for them? How is that a solution? How is that not gonna cause people to go cut hair behind closed doors?
They're open.
That's today. That's today, I agree. I just went to, uh, you know, there's the, again, so I can go off on tangent, but the bottom line is, is we're not talking about constitutional rights. We just wrote a letter to the Governor of Green to protect them, but we're not talking about them. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Legal counsel? Um, constitutional rights, I agree. But wasn't there a decision at our Ninth Circuit?
Uh, in addition, there was also, I was gonna brief the board. Um, there was a decision, uh, just recently at the Supreme Court level this weekend, and I'm gonna send an email to the board about that, um, upholding, uh, the state of California's restrictions on...
Which, which circuit was it, Barbara?
That was the US Supreme Court. It was actually a very close case, which shows the difficulties of legal's arguments. It was a five-four decision, and I believe Justice Roberts sided with liberals in that, uh, liberal justices. But they, it is upheld at this current point in time, that they did uphold the restrictions on the churches and, and basi- uh, limiting the sizes of, uh, religious gatherings. And that shows the trend of, uh, that, uh, the other, um, restrictions are also gonna be upheld.
So, so Peter, are we, I do look at both ways, that's a perfect example.
We're just not talking about it.
Well, but, you know, we're, I, you know, it's been in the public, it's been publicized. I read it. I should've emailed it to you, I will from now on when I see these things. But that's how I look at things. I look at things exactly what you just said. And it's a perfect example of paying attention to everything, not just being, my word, tunnel visioned on one thing. I look at all, all the data, and I come to a decision. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna wrap this up. Um, okay. Final comments from either, um, I'm sorry, from Jim, Supervisor Gillo? No comments? Thank you. Okay, we'll wrap it up, move on to the next name. You just wanna take a quick five-minute break? Yeah, thank you.
We're now on item number 27, County Administration Office, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have a presentation from Monterey Bay Community Power this morning still. And we have Heather, I believe is on the phone, and she'll be providing you an update concerning Monterey Bay Community Power. So Heather?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and County Supervisors, standing here, County, I'm Ray, JR.
Hey, JR, it's JR.
Yeah, I'm not Heather Val, I'm the Director of Communications and Energy Program, and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today as part of our committed annual update each one of our member agencies across the Central Coast. So at this time, give me a second to share my screen. Does everybody see the presentation okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I did want to provide an update. It's been a little while since we've been able to connect with the Board of Supervisors and the County San Benito, but a lot has changed at Monterey Bay Community Power since we launched service back in 2018. Just a quick reminder, we are a joint powers authority agency of cities and counties across the Monterey Bay area and now the Central Coast, and we partner with PG&E to help deliver electricity across the region. So we actually go out to the open market, source energy that kind of dispatched into the California Independent Systems Operator, and PG&E delivers those electrons into homes and businesses, and you end up becoming a shared customer of PG&E at Monterey Bay Community Power. It is an opt-out program, so by default, all eligible customers in San Benito County were enrolled, and then they had the option to opt out and go back to PG&E. We've had a lot of success with this program moving forward, and that's why it's actually expanded down to the counties of San Luis Obispo, specifically the cities of San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay, Pismo Beach, Grover Beach, Arroyo Grande, and Paso Robles. And virtually all of Santa Barbara County has now joined Monterey Bay Community Power. So we actually have 32 member agencies across the five county Central Coast region, all still committed to delivering on the same values and benefits that the tri-county region helped stand up the program about years ago. We did want to highlight a few accomplishments. We do fully recognize that this is incredibly challenging times, and our goal right now is to be responsive and collaborative and making sure resources are getting out to our customers, whether it's through website updates, newsletters, social media, you name it. We're really just trying to be a collaborative partner to make sure that customers and the community at large feel supported. Some of the big kind of takeaways that I wanted to share was our fiscal responsibility. Right now, we have achieved our reserve target, so we have over $120 million in reserves, and that's actually going to help us achieve a credit rating hopefully later this summer and fall. And that will be able to then negotiate better long-term power purchase agreements, to then hopefully be able to reduce the cost of electricity for our customers. The other key item I wanted to identify is the fact that we have delivered over $17 million of bill savings on folks' electricity bills since March of 2018. It's a pretty huge accomplishment just in the fact of about 20 months to be able to deliver that kind of economic relief to the customers throughout the Monterey Bay region. Just did want to remind folks that you have two options in Monterey Bay Community Power. As default, you have our MB Prime, MB Choice option, which is carbon-free and has a mixture of renewable energy sources. That's geothermal, wind, solar, bio, nasa, small-scale hydro, and the remaining is large hydroelectric. Now, folks, just like to support 100% renewable energy, we do have a service offering MB Prime for about eight tenths of a penny more, so they know they can put their dollars towards accelerating more renewable energy in California. We have some really exciting updates on utility-scale energy procurement. So that's us going out and building new projects to be able to connect to the big California grid and deliver clean electrons. So far today, we've actually signed, I believe, seven unique power purchase agreements. But the most important one I want to highlight, it's underlined in italics, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth one from the top. We're in the final stages of an agreement with the CalFlats solar project. It's in southeast Monterey County. We're actually going to be building a 16-megawatt battery storage to pair with that project to help be able to store those clean electrons and then dispatch them down to the grid. We're hopefully to have that come online in the next year or two. But the big takeaway is that we estimate that 40% of our customer consumption will come from new renewable energy projects that are either in California or connected with the California grid. We did want to do the highlight for the County of San Benito, again, this is the unincorporated region, has about 91% enrollment, which is strong. In terms of the savings to the county operations, so think about that, the county facilities, all the buildings that you own and operate, we've been able to deliver for a little over $13,000 of bill savings. But more importantly, within the entire, within the community of San Juan Batista as a whole, sorry, the County of San Juan, San Benito as a whole, we're looking at close to $1 million of bill savings since 2018. And again, that's from March 2018 to the end of 2019. I have, I fully appreciate the opportunity to follow up about the COVID-19 response and all the great work that the county is moving forward with. I did want to highlight that MBCP put forth, I'd say arguably, the largest response to COVID-19 across the state of California in terms of our community choice energy programs. We produced a rate relief package that effectively will reduce customers' rates by 50% in May and June actively right now, and that will put back about $22.5 million into our customers' pocketbooks over these next two months. It's about $6.5 million for residential customers, $11 million for commercial and businesses, and then a little over $5 million for agricultural customers. And again, we're doing that as a responsive and decisive way to equitably support all of our almost 300,000 customers across the Monterey Bay region. Again, and we use the term deferment, so we will have to kind of bring back that revenue through a multitude of ways. But ultimately, no matter what, this year, customers will actually be saving more money than if we have no response to COVID-19. So that's a good takeaway. Energy programs is another great opportunity that we're really accelerating economic development and clean air and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in our region. We set aside a portion of our revenue to help with electrification, fuel switching, and resiliency. A lot of our exciting programs have been outlined here, but I did want to mention that we went live with an electric vehicle infrastructure program last October, and we've had about 95% of the $7 million that was available subscribed to, and actually, all of the funding, about $600,000 for San Juan, sorry, for San Benito County has been reserved, and we look forward to seeing those projects built across the County of San Benito. We did also launch, most recently, an electrification grant program for both affordable housing and market-rate multi-unit dwellings. And actually, we received more requests for funding than we actually had. So we're looking forward to hopefully to accelerate cost-effective electric housing across the region. And the last highlight I did want to mention was about our partnership with the Air District, the Monterey Bay Air District. We have one, we will have $1.2 million to fund electric school buses at no cost to school districts across the region. So I'm sure there are a lot of great school districts in the County of San Benito, so once that goes live, I'll certainly circulate that with all the superintendents and the fleet managers, as well as Ray, and make sure that we can get some electric school buses over to the County of San Benito. I did also want to highlight one very thoughtful and innovative approach to public safety power shut-off. MBCP actually has set aside $25 million to fund backup power supply for the public sector, as well as the private sector. So folks who are looking for low-cost financial support to help make sure that the lights can stay on when there is public safety power shut-off. So whether you are a city or county government, a public school district, a public hospital, or a public water, wastewater district, we do have $20 million of low-cost funding available for you. So I certainly look forward to working with the communities at the public sector in the County of San Juan, in the County of San Benito to make sure that we can help you in light of the public safety power shut-offs that are going to be here and stay for a long time. I just wanted to wrap up a few things. As we move towards unifying the Central Coast across the five county service area, we are establishing an annual meeting, and certainly, we certainly are excited to have that as an opportunity to engage with our board members about all the great work that's happening. We are actually seeking board approval tomorrow at our policy board meeting to change our name to Central Coast Community Energy for Monterey Bay Community Power, and that hopes to go live in September. We have opened up an office in San Juan, in San Luis Obispo, and we also are moving to a more effective, customer-friendly cost of service rate structure in January of 2021. So now that I conclude my presentation, and I begin, it's just an honor and a privilege to engage with the Board of Supervisors today, and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Supervisor Gilio?
No, sir, thank you.
Supervisor, uh, Catalo?
Good job.
Thank you. Supervisor Medina?
Natera.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
No.
None. Thank you. Let me open to the public. Anyone from the public?
If you would like to make a comment, please press star nine if you're participating on my phone or click on the raise your hand icon. No, but...
No? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. We'll move to the next item. Ray? IRS?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry about that.
This, this again was...
They're going to pay taxes.
This again was a direction from your board. Your board requested an update from COG. Unfortunately, Mary Gilbert is not available, but she does have, oh, she is available? Okay, great. So Mary's on the, on the call, and she'll be able to give you guys a brief update. Thanks, Mary, for joining us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Are you capable, Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So, yeah, sorry, I was not here earlier this morning, but I actually do have Veronica Lusama of our staff who's here. She'll be giving a brief presentation on the transportation priority project. It's a project list that we developed with your staff. And I think Veronica, if you can go through the presentation, then we'll both be here to answer any questions from the cab.
We can barely hear you. A little bit better, but not really, a little bit better.
I think you need to speak up a little louder.
I'll try to speak as loud as I can. Can you hear me now?
Not really, but we, I can, but not really. Oh, there you go.
I'll try to speak as loud as I can.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
We got it.
Is it up better?
Much better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, great. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. So as Supervisor Delectrus noted at the main meeting, the COG board received a presentation on the list of near-term transportation priority projects that could be delivered over the next five years by each of the local jurisdictions, as well as Caltrans in partnership with San Benito COG. So the goal of this effort, this slide is advancing here, okay, there we go. The goal of this effort is to track the progress of investments that advance the region's transportation network and to identify projects that if funding were to become available, these projects may be given funding priorities, as well as to identify projects that could deliver the maximum benefit to the public. So in effort to collect this information, COG staff requested from our technical advisory committee that the local agencies and Caltrans provide a list of investments based on specific COG guidance. I'd be happy to provide the list of investments that was provided to the COG board at the main meeting after the meeting to the Board of Supervisors, if you're all interested in seeing that list. So projects were categorized based, under one of three tiers, based on funding and project readiness. Tier one are fully funded projects where construction will begin within a short timeframe. This category is intended to provide information on projects breaking ground in the near future and in some cases, over the next several weeks. Under tier one, we've identified over $159 million of investments throughout the San Benito region. Tier two are shovel-ready projects where the construction phase is unfunded. These could be funded projects if a COVID-19 transportation stimulus package were to be released by the federal government, as they would have the most immediate impact on employment and the economy. Under this tier, we've identified over $20 million in projects. Under tier three, we've, these are partially funded, high-priority projects that can be reasonably funded and constructed over the next five years. Under this tier, we've identified over $90 million in investments. So in summary, the list of priority projects identifies over $271 million of investments across all modes of transportation. As you can see from this chart, with the highest concentration of projects in the highway, roadway, and bridge categories. Staff will continue to track these projects, and we will be providing updates to the COG board on a quarterly basis. So that concludes my presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Thank you, Veronica. I appreciate that. Mary and Supervisor Hernandez, thank you for your update earlier. One of my specific questions that we were tracking late last year was Highway 156, and we haven't heard a lot of updates or talk about construction times, start time. We're looking at fall of this year was the last we kind of heard. And can you give us an update on where we're at with 156? And for the folks listening, that's a four-lane stretch between Union Road and the Alameda and San Juan Batista, which is a severely needed project that we've been working on. And unfortunately, for various reasons, since dating back many years, it continues to be delayed. And the, before the COVID crisis, we had a pretty decent start time. They're dealing with some eminent domain issues with some of the land out there. I'd just like to get a comprehensive update for our community on that. Thank you.
Sure, I can go ahead and take this question. This is Mary Gilbert of COG. So the project moving forward, yes, we have some concerns with delays related primarily to utility relocations and utility access, I guess, and as well as finalizing the right-of-way for the project. So on our end locally, we have signed all the necessary paperwork, because we are contributing, well, the city and Paulister and San Benito County are contributing about $9 million of developer impact fees to the project, almost $10 million. So that is secured. We have an agreement for that. And we also were successful in getting the state funding for the project as well. So that's kind of where we are. Let me, I can pull up our latest update as well from Caltrans, but it is still looking like a fall timeframe for construction starts, the last update that we received from them. So we did ask about advocacy if needed, and we are available to advocate as we need to if there's any issues related to the utilities. Unfortunately, it's a statewide problem that every jurisdiction seems to be facing.
Yeah, with PG&E.
Did that answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's perfect. And the only thing I would, I would hope, and I'm sure you guys are already on it, but that our COG commissioners and also our COG staff, whatever help you need from our local representatives, whether it's Robert Rivas or Ana Caballero. I know in the beginning of the year, Robert was starting a, Assembly Member Rivas was starting a task force for Highway 25 to try to, you know, help you guys along with that. And I've spoken to both of those representatives personally many times, and they support starting Highway 25 as quickly as possible. And I know they have lobbied the CTC, Caltrans, all of the above to make sure that that start date doesn't get delayed again. And I'm a firm believer that we need to keep the pressure, and so to speak, and the need and the desire up for our community, because I think if these programs are not frequently talked about and we're not reminding our state reps and Caltrans and all the folks at the CTC, that we just don't want to get put on the back burner again. We just can't, we can't have that happen again, because 25, you know, on an aggressive time schedule, I heard people are saying 2025, maybe longer. So, you know, we could have this road functioning by then if we stick to our timelines. And anything I can do to help advocate for that, I would, just let me know, and I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Mary, for the update.
Mary, I'll get to Supervisor Patel in a minute. Mary, my understanding was that Caltrans said somewhere be, more likely, 156 is looking at summer of 2021. Isn't that correct?
The last update that I received said that they're ready to list this, next quarter. So ready to list a project for construction this summer in 2020. Now, of course, there's a bid time period, and then I think maybe the caution was that if they go into the fall and then winter, there's sometimes a delay, weather-related delay to the project, the wait until the next construction season. But that is the latest information that I have from them.
All right, well, let's hope that, let's hope that I'm wrong and I'm just...
Okay, sorry, yeah, I guess I'm, and I may have misremembered the last update that we got at our COG board meeting, so I'll verify that and get back to you guys on it, and we'll send out some information.
Thank you, Mary. Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, I think that's an area that I had a lot of concern with on the changes of commissioners at COG is because we were really very, very critical of the extensions that Caltrans was, you know, keeps putting off these projects. And they really need to be ridden hard to, you know, pick a time and stick to that time. You know, show something that's going on out there, because we're the ones that take the political heat that, oh, this project was promised. We passed a tax, we're taxed, you know, with other state funds, and we showed no highway, and the highway gets more expensive as time goes on. And then Caltrans wants us to pay more that share, and that's wrong. And, you know, if they're whole, having this, these delays for one reason or another, then they should be footing the whole bill, not off of our impact fees and our local funding. And so that's beat up enough. I'm going to go to, getting back to this, monies that have been identified, Mary and Veronica. You know, the Measure G funds, as now that they're coming, you know, now we see that they're coming in, I think we have a better measurement. Is our projections from 2018, 19 similar? Were in line of what actually occurred? And going forward, what do we project? Because that's pertaining to the, the resources and the funding for Highway 25. And then I have some questions about Highway 25 after you answer the Measure G revenue stream.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Mary.
Mary, I actually have the information in front of me, if that's okay.
Sure, thank you.
So, yeah, so we currently have $8.1 million that we've collected so far in Measure G funds. As far as projections goes, it looks like we're anticipating a decrease in taxable sales. So as you can assume that the COVID-19 will have an impact on the taxable sales and what is being collected, we project out that until, it looks like there's going to be a decrease up until June of 2021, where we, where we start seeing an increase in, in the sales that are collected. So it looks like we're going to be impacted for about a year.
Okay.
And just, Supervisor Patel, this is Mary, just one more. I think you were also asking where we're on, as far as what we projected for our first year. And we are pretty much right on the money with our original projection for our first, first full year of funding. And we haven't gotten, the 8.4 million is not, not include, I go through February, excuse me, of this year. But we're pretty much, I think we anticipated 8.2 with our estimate. So we were good up to this point, and now we will just have to see the impacts of the economic downturn that we're likely facing. So we are tracking that as best we can.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why I've been such a large advocate for increasing, you know, commercial zoning in this county and increasing revenue streams through job creation and business creation. And it's so important, because then you insulate yourself with these cycles in the economy.
Anthony, sorry, Supervisor Matz, just clarifying question on that same point with the revenue?
Yeah, of course.
Just before we, before we get too far along. I think one of the things that we've, we've had some questions about is, Director Gilbert, as we talked about in the past about, and I'm not sure if there's a finalized version of this, but maybe it's coming, is for Measure G, are we looking at local jurisdictions getting the Measure G funding, passing it through directly to the locals for the first five years while 25 is in planning? Or are we looking at, you know, seven years? Are we looking at, well, maybe it'll be two years? Or what's, what's kind of the thought now with the revenue projections, the Highway 25 planning? Because I think for this board, that's going to be critical for us to be able to either do some bonding, to do larger, you know, projects so we can get the most bang for our buck? Or do we keep, so to speak, going slowly and, you know, spending a million here, a million there, two million there, as opposed to bonding for, you know, a period of time? If we knew that revenue was kind of going to be there, then we can go out and bond. I hope that question makes sense, and if not, I can clarify a little bit.
No, yeah, I mean, because you do recall that at COG, we, over the last year, we did a couple of different revenue projections and looked at different methods that we could use to either allocate the funds locally upfront, and then there might be a period of time that the local jurisdictions would not be receiving funds as the Highway 25 projects will need a larger share. And so the COG board's still considering that. Supervisor Hernandez is on a strategic, or excuse me, an ad hoc committee with COG for our strategic plan. So we are, we're working on developing that, and more will come to COG at the June board meeting, where we'll look at those, we'll revisit those strategies again. We've got, we do have a little bit of new information for Highway 25, which I think Veronica can probably speak to. She was just part of a value engineering effort that took place, as well as some of your county staff. So now that we're refining our numbers for Highway 25, and that will give us a better sense of what our cash flow needs to be. But we want to, you know, of course, be able to deliver projects to the community is our number-one goal. So we're looking at strategies to do that as best we can.
Yeah, and that was kind of aligned with my second part of the question. Was the design and matching of the revenues that we, you know, we projected in the future for Highway 25. And that was something that I'm still really concerned about. I know Caltrans would love to have an expressway, but whether or not we could afford it is another question. And what are, are we doing anything at this point in time to receive some sort of state funding? And what are, are we doing anything at, at this point in time to, uh, receive some sort of state, uh, funding? Uh, or share funding for Highway 25 if they wanna move forward with the expressway? Or if it's a be just locally funded? Or we change the, uh, design, uh, to what we could afford, but widen that highway? We made a promise to the voters, I mean, the taxpayers of this, uh, county, and, uh, to deliver a project too. And it can't be 15, 20 years down the road for Highway 25. It needs to be in the foreseeable future. And they, they deserve to have a, uh, reasonable updates as we go on.
Right, so, um, we did secure, um, five million of, um, state funds. We did receive five million of state funds, um, through the, uh, state local partnership program. So, that is, um, coming to COG. Unfortunately, we're, uh, we're in a funding cycle right now, that, um, we're not really poised to, to receive any additional state funding outside of that five million, although that's a great deal of money for a, a community our size, um, as a state share. But what we're doing now is we're poising ourselves to be ready to go in the next run of funding, which will start in about a year and a half. Um, in the meantime, we'll be finalizing our environmental study of Highway 25, um, and, and, you know, re- going through the project design. Um, regarding the expressway alternative and the concerns of the cost of that, um, we worked with Caltrans on putting together this value analysis, um, efforts. That was a group of planners, engineers, RMO experts, um, Caltrans and local agencies represented, who moved that together for about two weeks total, um, to go over the project design and potential, um, potential changes to that to save money and accelerate the schedule. Um, again, Veronica was part of that team. Um, our major director, Maver Dennis, as well as some of his staff, were also on the team. So, I think we have some good alternatives. COG has made a, um, has taken action to support an interchange, interchange at 25 and 156 as the, um, sort of the first phase of a, of a longer term Highway 25 project. These larger projects often get built in phases, so we're trying to, you know, break this one down and get it, um, get it, uh, moving forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. I got just one request. Uh, if we could have another update of these projects, uh, maybe in, uh, early fall or late fall before we, you know, the end of the year?
Yes.
And also, uh, if we could have the, the spreadsheet as far as the, uh, the, the funding, uh, it would make sense. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Good, 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 good idea Supervisor Patel. Let's do that, Ray. Somewhere September? And then bring also the spreadsheets of the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, and what the prospective, uh, road, road improvements and repairs are for each respective tier. Uh, actually, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Very good. That concludes your, President.
Yeah, that's it.
Supervisor Medina?
Nothing, sir.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah.
Okay, let me open up to the public. Do you have any speaking cards?
And pl- press star at nine if you're on your mobile device, or press the raise your hand icon. I don't see any.
No? Okay.
Oh.
Okay, I'll close it. All right, uh, back to the board. Um, Harry, you wanna say something?
I do, sir. Um, members of the board, I was part of the, I'll take this off a little bit. Uh, part of the process this last week, we have some structural problems. Caltrans is insisting on building the expressway concept, and that is now estimated to cost $340 million, because they've added a piece in Santa Clara County for the mix. We don't have that kind of money. There is no other state money or federal money right now to complete the highway. Uh, as Mary said, we have focused through the COG, uh, in pushing and, and through your support for the interchange at 156 and 25 as an initial stage. That's about a $40 million project. Uh, that project, uh, can probably move ahead quicker than the rest of the highway, but there really is no significant funding to do what Caltrans wants. In the options that we looked at, among them, um, I had advocated an option of relinquishment of the right-of-way through the county, uh, as a potential option to build the four lanes. Uh, that can be done within the budgets, but it is part of the evaluation right now. Uh, it ended up scoring out of six final options, uh, the third highest, with very little work on it, because it can be built for significantly less money, and it can be built a lot sooner. Uh, I prefer if Caltrans builds something, but they can't seem to get off this expressway concept, unfortunately.
I, uh, I have a question. Harry, I have, um, what, what do we need to do as a board here to try to kinda get this off-center? Because I, I honestly don't see the necessity for an expressway out there. I, I, I just don't see where, um, you know, if you had residential businesses out there, things like that, heck yeah. And put an expressway and have the frontage roads, and, and we have to bite the bullet somehow. But there's, uh, agricultural fields that have been consolidated. We, we spent, I don't know, I think maybe Supervisor David Cruz was on the board at that time on the COG board. And we consolidated much of the access points, uh, on the balsa to just a two or three places that people could get on and off. And, you know, to put an expressway out there is flat out a waste of taxpayers' money. And, um, we, we, we really need to, um, make it clear that if it's gonna be our money funding a state, uh, facility, we should have d- design control, um, that, you know, I would love to have a Cadillac or a yacht, but all I could afford is a rowboat. Um, and that's kinda what we got here. And I, I think it would be safe if it was four lanes, uh, two in each direction with the, the, the K-rail in the middle, and, and people could get from point A to point B just fine. But what, what do we need to do to assist that design?
Well, I believe that you're gonna be able to, uh, view the results of this study and, and have input, uh, into it in the next several weeks. But again, we argued with Caltrans that in other locations, they have built exactly which Supervisor's talking about, a rural four-lane highway. We have that right now. If you go to 156 past San Juan Batista, that's a perfect example of
Perfect.
a rural highway. Two lanes on each side, a median barrier, and the, uh, safety lane on the outside within a small right-of-way. Uh, the other features can be added out over time, as we have more funds, as more money comes in. But I think to get the four lanes, uh, we're gonna have to be very aggressive and keep pushing as much as we can. Hence, why we brought up the relinquishment option.
Yeah.
Not my preferred option, but it gets the discussion going to something that we can build.
Yeah, and, uh, sectional road from 129 to Highway 25 is, is the same thing.
Right.
Not very many accesses, and, but it, it functions just fine. Thanks. And I encourage my colleagues, you know, to get a lot tougher, uh, with Caltrans on this issue. Um, also with our state legislators as we, uh, meet and talk to them about transportation needs in Samaria County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thank you, Mary. Actually, um.
Very much.
Mary, can you come, can you come back in a month or two and give us an update? I just wanna put it on Monday basis. That is real important, especially Highway 25.
Yeah, well, well.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on.
Hey, Mr. Chair, yes, we, we're on the, uh, on item number 29 on the agenda. This is gonna be regards to reviewing the Internal Revenue Code 115 trust funding policy and provide, uh, staff direction, uh, from your board. Stuart's been working hard. He mentioned at our last, uh, special board meeting, uh, concerning budgeting, uh, different funding possibilities and, and actually savings. And, um, its staff actually has been working on, um, going out for an actuarial from Nihart, and, uh, that's what you see in your packet. But there's some, um, some things that Stuart's gonna be discussing with you concerning where we stand with our current, um, obligation, and, uh, from a percentage, uh, basis, as well as some of the savings that we could potentially do by actually, um, putting some funding, or not as much funding into the trust. So anyways, so I have Stuart here. As soon as I get this set up, he'll be able to, um, highlight those, um, those items for you. Did I need it for the report?
Can we take a short recess?
Maybe we could skip to a different one.
Um, we can, let's do the, can we do the other one, or? That's fine. I just need this report to be pulled up. Well, we can wait, we can wait a minute. Can I pull up the word set?
Yeah. Yes.
I'm trying to get notice.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Oh, great.
Share the screen once.
Is it sharing? Is it sharing?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, sir. I'm gonna start with my slideshow. Which is... Nope. The other one, there. No? Yes. Okay. Am I gonna have to move it to share to the other one? Yeah, I got you. Okay. Uh, good afternoon, uh, board members, uh, and, uh, members of the public. Sorry about that technical difficulty there. Um, so as, uh, as, uh, C A O Espinoza stated, this is a continuation of our discussion from the, uh, May 12th meeting, um, regarding, um, our funding strategy for the IRC 115 trust. This is the other post-employment benefits. Um, as, uh, as the board knows, uh, for retirees before 2013, um, there is a benefit, um, based on the, uh, based on a flat rate amount. Um, after 2013, it's the PEMCA minimum, um, as a monthly, uh, contribution from the county towards, uh, the retirees', uh, healthcare contributions. This trust was adopted, uh, by your board in, uh, 2009, uh, basically to put funding away to lessen the liability burden on the county. Um, and, uh, since 2009, uh, the county has done a very aggressive, um, uh, funding strategy, um, that has put the county in a very good position with the, uh, with the trust funding. Uh, the funding level is, uh, is estimated and currently at, but estimated to be at by the end of the year, uh, at about 86% funded, um, which is a, a very high level. Um, we had discussions with our actuary, which is Nihart, um, and they said that they normally don't see their OPEB trusts from, uh, other counties and agencies at that level. Um, so it's a very high funded level for, for the OPEB, um, which is very good. So, I, just for, uh, members of the public, I'm gonna be referring to this as IRC 115, uh, OPEB. Um, just wanted to highlight a few kind of, uh, terms here. Um, so the IRC 115, um, is just a code section in the, uh, in the Internal Revenue Code, um, that identifies that certain income is exempt from tax, from income tax, um, similar to our local government agency. These IRC 115 trusts were basically created in order to pre-fund OPEB or pension liabilities in a tax-advantaged account. Um, the, uh, the big benefits, uh, to our county, um, and, and that the board had realized when they started, uh, this trust and, and started funding it, um, was that credit, the, uh, credit rating agencies see this as a very positive fiscal management practice. Um, it can be a, also a rainy day reserve. Um, and, uh, there's additional, o- obviously, you can generate, uh, income with different kinds of, uh, equities, um, uh, in that trust, as well as, uh, our OPEB liabilities are reduced, um, a- and we can show a, a, a better, uh, liability to asset ratio, um, uh, which is very beneficial, um, through credit rating, um, as well. Um, some of the common terms that I'm gonna be outlining, and that are outlined in the staff report and in the actuary, um, uh, report that Nihart prepared, is PEGO, uh, which basically means the cost of the current retiree pool's annual benefits. Uh, the actuarially determined contribution, which is the actuary's recommended contribution based on the liability, the, uh, the, uh, the assets, um, and, and the funding level plan that the agency, um, has created. Um, and additionally, I just wanted to identify that if you see the word explicit benefit, um, that is the retiree's pool's benefit cost to the county. Um, similarly, that's interchangeable with PEGO. I just wanna identify that, so everybody, um, kinda can be on the same page a little bit here. Um, so I, uh, I brought this specific slide to the board at the last meeting, um, on this, and we've actually had some substantial increases, uh, due to the economy. Um, the stock market has been, uh, rising substantially since the, the initial, um, big downturn in, uh, March and April. Um, so we're, uh, we're still down considerably from December, um, but we have made some gains back. Um, and we are at about a $25.2 million balance as of May 28, um, which, again, that represents about a 86% um, uh, fund, funding level, um, compared to our liabilities. Um, and just so everybody's aware, again, I talked at the last meeting, um, the county has two trusts. Um, we have two, uh, sets of assets at two different agencies. One is held at, uh, one is called SERBIT, which is held with CALPERS, a state agency, and one is PARZ, um, which is a private entity, uh, that manages, uh, a lot of government agencies, uh, funding. Um, I just wanted to highlight, that's the reason why there's two, two trust accounts there.
Hey Stuart, I thought PARZ only had $3 million.
Um, so we have two accounts now with PARZ. So, back at the beginning of this year, in July, uh, sorry, in August, um, the board, uh, uh, on the recommendation from the auditor's office, uh, moved to, um, move about half of the assets, um, from the OPEB trust fund, uh, to PARZ. Prior to that, the board, and I, uh, excuse me, I don't know the exact date on that, it was a few years back. Uh, the board put $3 million with PARZ in a separate trust that is our, uh, pension, um, rainy day reserve trust. Um, so there's now two separate accounts with PARZ. This is just the OPEB.
And I, and I'm sorry, and I noticed that the, the rate of return is not as good as, as the other one.
Well, so this, uh, this, these are negative amounts from December. I just wanted to highlight what happened over the last, you know, uh, six months or so, um, to the assets, uh, in the trust. Um, we have not really realized, I, I mean, the PARZ, we haven't even had it in for a year yet. Um, so I don't think that there's been a fair
Okay.
representation of.
Fair enough.
Um, but, um, I think, uh, one of the selling points was PARZ can, is, I guess, more nimble and can move their assets around, uh, in a different sense to, uh, um, to address different things going on in the market. Um, and they have stated that they have higher returns than the SERBIT. I think that was the, that was the reason. I think that was the, that was the reason why that change was made for the board to see which trust they would like to go with in the future. Does that answer that question? Okay. So just wanted to highlight that. These are the contributions over time. I know at the last meeting Supervisor Gilio had actually asked those decreases that we have seen, which are about, I think I said, 1.7 million were down from December. Are those our principal balance or interest? Again, no. We have only contributed, I believe it's about 15.8 million into the trust directly, not including the PEGO costs that the county has been paying as we have gone year to year. And we have only pooled about 1.3 million from the trust that any, over the lifespan of the last 10 years. But our total current assets are about 25.2 million. So we've had interest returns of, you know, about 10 million dollars there. So I just wanted to highlight that and bring that up. So this, this slide just basically shows the projection of where we're at. The, last year, we did a contribution of 900,000 and made the PEGO payment. So we didn't take any assets and we actually added assets to the trust. And then this year, we budgeted for about 530,000 to be contributed to the trust as well as continue the on-go, the PEGO payments for the retiree contribution without pulling any assets from the trust. Yesterday, we actually had a meeting with SERBIT and they went over. And I thought that this performance metric would be brought up and would be a good highlight for the board to see. They, again, the investment earnings you can see are about 10.8 million just in this, on the SERBIT side of our total funds. And again, we've only had about disbursements of 1.3 million and expenses of approximately 160,000. That transfer out is the transfer that was made earlier this fiscal year to PARZ. And the total annualized rate of return has been approximately 7.4%. Again, the SERBIT is currently in what they call a Strategic One Plan, which is the more aggressive plan. It has more equities. And I believe we're in the same position at the, at the new PARZ trust as well. So we have a report that was attached to the, to the staff report. This is the Nihart Actuaries Report. And now we, we came to the actuary to ask them their opinion and to give us some, some funding plans for your board to consider. And that's kinda what we're bringing to you today. I have three policies. One, we're not recommending at all to the board. It's mainly for a, just a, to show what would happen if we draw, if we started drawing down on our assets. What would that look like? How long would it last? And that is funding policy number three. But I will go through these funding policies. So funding policy one, which similarly mimics what our current policy is, which has been to aggressively fund the trust by not taking any assets out of the trust and continuing to pay the PEGO, which is approximately, has been about 1.8 to 1.9 million dollars per year, as well as contribute approximately 500,000 dollars per year directly to the trust. That ongoing cost is about 2.5 million dollars annually. They have estimated that if the county continues that policy over the next two years, we would get to about a one, we would get to 100% funded level. Additionally, they've recommended to continue, the actuary always recommends to continue, some sort of contribution to the trust. And they're recommending about 500 to 300,000 ongoing. They have an amortized schedule there. And that would actually have our assets get to 130% funded by 2040.
Can I interrupt him real quick? On that 500,000 annually, I know there's a calculation behind that. Does that ever change or will that, is that reviewed every couple of years?
Yeah. So though, what I've asked them to do is that we review these funding strategies that the board puts in place every time they come out with their new valuation report to update the assets, to update the market, to update our expected returns. So we're gonna move forward with that as an administrative policy because we are waiting for the next year's one, which is the 2019. They do it in arrears. But the last one we had was in 2017 and they do it every two years. So we should be seeing another one soon here. And I, I did tell them that we should look at updating this once that comes out. So. This is a, just, I know all the board members have that. It's available to the public online on the, on the, on the report. But this is what it would look like in a table sense. Not to get too compli- Oh, I lost it. Oh, can you help me? I have to click reshare every time. So I'll just stay, I'll stay on these funding pages. But, but basically, this outlines that, that one point, that about approximately $2 million contribution. In that A column, for the PEGO, the B column obviously would be their continued contribution. C is what we're currently doing with the additional contributions to the trust fund every year. We had estimated about 531,000. We've been doing that basically on an FTE count per department. And that's how we've been splitting that up as we've gone. But as you can see, we are at about eighty-six percent. That assets at end of year were actually a little bit higher now, considering the increased returns that we had from the stock market. But, but you'll see that over, over the next two funding policies. The, the next funding policy is a level contribution amount of 500,000 dollars continuing until the county reaches a 100% funding level. The actuaries estimated that if we begin doing that next year, which would free up approximately $2 million for countywide operations for all funds, we would, if we only contribute 500,000 dollars with our expected returns, we would get to the 100% funding level by 2040. And one thing I did wanna highlight is that because the county has moved to a Pemco minimum, we're actually gonna need less assets going towards the future. If you look at, I believe it's the 2032 year and you look at column C, you'll actually start to see our explicit payment for retiree contributions is actually gonna start decreasing. And that's where we're gonna start to seeing our liabilities actually go in opposite direction because of those changes that the board had made to future, to the retire, the retiree benefits after 2013 for those employees.
And the new hire, and just for, Mr. Chair, just for clarity. So this is one of the, the enactment the board made previously on all new hires. They would be receiving the Pemco minimum upon retirement. So this is what he was, he's referring to.
We have discussed this internally in the administration office. And this is the one that, this is the funding plan that the, that our office would recommend to the board. This does free up funding for operations, especially in light of COVID now. We were already going to recommend it before COVID, but that has just made this that much more heightened for the need for additional, or decreasing expenditures in operations for the county. But regardless, it's still a good plan and I think it's a good consideration for the board, knowing that we would still be on target to reach that 100% funding level. Again, I actually had our actuary look at what would happen if we got to that 100% funding level at 2040 and how long would our assets left, last if we started drawing down on it. At that point, they said that the assets would last till 2100. So we are well-funded. We do have a good asset level compared to our liability and the future liability that we'll see with the changes to that Pemco minimum. So just wanted to highlight that. The third funding plan, and again, this is not recommendation, this is more for informational. We just wanted to highlight what it would look like if the county ever had to draw down 100% to pay that PEGO cost for the retirees' contributions. They estimated that the assets that we currently have would last us about 25 years to 2045. Again, that's not the recommendation and we don't foresee to, that we're going to be needing to ask the board for something of this magnitude, but we just wanted to show what it would look like with no contribution to the trust and how long those assets would last. That, that concludes my presentation on the, on the funding plans and the funding report that Nihart came up with and presented to the administration office for us to, to give consideration to the board. And we would just like to identify that funding policy number two is the recommendation from our office, continuing. But I'd take any questions from the board.
Supervisor Medina?
Yes, number two, I concur with your assessment on that. The only question I have for the board is the excess dollars that we would have going to the general fund. Is there a way we can restrict that? And I know Ray's over there laughing at me because I always like to restrict funds.
How can you tell?
And I'm talking about restricting funds. I don't know the percentage, but I'm just saying restrict a certain amount of funds to the roads. Because that is where we're hurting the most. That's what we need to fix. And when you're thinking about the operational part of it with COVID-19, remember, we do have reserves also. And we have a very, very healthy reserve. And what I'm looking at is if we keep on letting these roads deplete, it's gonna cost more three years from now than it would now. So I would, I would agree with your assessment as, as long as we can put some verbiage in there that would state that a certain percentage must be spent on roads, not just a black hole. Thank you.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stuart, originally when I had met with Ray about this yesterday, I was, I was more leaning towards the conservative side, saying, let's just stick with what we're doing. Let's get 100% funded by, you know, in the next two years and we're just, you know, we're done with it. Then we have the maintenance of effort. I've, I've thought about that quite a bit and having the flexibility to have those funds available. The, the other thing that really weighed on me was regardless of whether or not we get fully funded within two years, we're gonna have an estimated 300 to 500,000 dollar annual maintenance payment essentially to keep us at that level. And we're gonna be spending the same anyway for, you know, we're gonna spend the money regardless. Is, is there anything that, am I, am I making that too simplistic? Is that, is that too simple to say that that's true, whether, let's take the $2 million now, save it for our economic uncertainty, perhaps spend some money on the, on the roads? Because I 100% agree with Supervisor Medina, the longer we wait, the more, exponentially more expensive those roads get. So we need to focus on that. But am I thinking about that too simply or does that make sense, that argument?
No, I think that argument makes a lot of sense. Now, they did, that is the actuaries' recommendation. That's not necessarily the way that the board needs to go, especially on the, the policy number one. But when we're starting to get to 140% funded, then it's, you know, we're not really using, I think, the tool of the trust that it was created for. You know, they, they've recommended to us 100%, 110%. It's really what the board feels comfortable with. And, and they've put down here that you would get to 130%. We could stop funding at any time if you wanted to do two years, two more years, get to 100% and then just stop and just start drawing. I mean, there's all kinds of ways we can do it. We're just recommending at this point that, you know, there are operational needs, roads. You know, half of this money is being paid from some subvented funds and we are seeing subvented funds being decreased. We just had a discussion with our child support agency where they're expecting huge revenue losses because the, the state has changed their allocation method. So there, you know, there's a real benefit, I think, at this point to, to look into utilizing the trust at this point.
I, I support, I support that. I support option number two and I really wanna, this came before my time and I don't wanna take any credit for this. This is the administration, the prior board members that have been up here for quite some time. You guys made some critical decisions early on that put us in a really good position. I believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but the industry standard is more for OPEB funding is probably around 70%, maybe high 60s. So Samuel County is in a very uniquely positive position for this. And I wanted to thank our predecessors and our current administration for, for doing that. And, you know, Joe Paul's office and, and everybody that, that had a hand in this because I gotta tell you, we could be having a totally different conversation last night. I listened to the city, Gilroy City Council meeting last night for two or three hours, a lot of public comment. But they're looking at an $8 million deficit that they need to close the gap by next fiscal year. So layoffs, freezes, it's, it's bad. So thank you for, for that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with anything that's been said by the two previous supervisors. I, I lean towards option number two. I, I see some areas in operations that we could really use some help with. And it's, and we're still going down the right path as far as getting to 100%. I, I thought 142% is a little bit on the high side for this fund. But I could see 110% because you do have market fluctuations. And sometimes those fluctuations will last a couple of years. But I think it's prudent to utilize, whether it's for the, you know, roads. I, I think the flexibility for future boards is there to manage that money. Roads, salaries for employee retention, expanding, you know, certain departments or, and, and so it, it, we're in a pretty good spot. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Turn my mic. Yeah, after thinking, thinking it through, I'm usually leaning towards the really conservative. I know number one is, is just that, but I do agree with the supervisors that, I mean, critical infrastructure ultimately is gonna have a cost long-term when it's avoided. I know that's what we're dealing with, our parks. And if we don't take care of our infrastructure, whether we pay it now or we're gonna pay it later and it's gonna be at a higher cost. And ultimately, it's, it's gonna give us a lot more to bite off down the road than if we take a bite out of it a little bit at a time. So, so all things considered, I feel like the second is the most practical and still gives us leverage, I think. So with trying to understand what Supervisor Medina comments were, so we would have some kind of restrictions to make sure that we could leverage. Maybe if there's some kind of issues, and I, I mean, I, I hate the idea of touching the reserves because to me, that should be like the last recourse. But if we have to, what would that look like?
If, if we would have to?
Like basically, you know, set a cap or something.
So, so just, just so everyone's aware, I just, this funding is gonna be saved from multiple different funds throughout our, our organization. About 1 million in savings would be directly from the general fund that could be reallocated for other purposes. This is not a funding that is coming from a certain source though. So I wouldn't, you know, there's not really a, I guess I would say, we wouldn't put a resolution because this is not revenue. But the board can make the determination on, on where they would like to see these savings reallocated within the- to see these savings reallocated within the county operations. I do want to say that we will have some savings also with actually our road fund and our road crew just by doing this because some of the funding, we're making contributions toward the road funds crew, road fund employees as well here, so.
So it's a very flexible fund is what you're telling?
Yeah, it's just the savings and expenditures rather than having this money go out. And like I said, about $1 million is coming from general operations. And there is money that we are contributing from grants and other funding. But like I said, we are seeing some decreases, especially with realignment money to certain programs, social programs and health programs and stuff like that.
Okay. And so my final question is, it sounds like we're using savings as a means to deal with like maybe, you know?
Shortfalls in revenue or we can reallocate some of the revenues to roads or other areas.
Got it. So every year, Mr. Chair, I mean, so every year we budget per person an X amount so we can lower that value, so to speak, with regards to having that money being transferred to these accounts. We can lessen that and redirect that to other needs. It can be parks, it can be roads, it can be salaries, it can be so on and so forth. So we've been outlining a budget every year. We can lower that and then redirect those funds, basically. Okay. And one other thing I wanted to mention too is that we can also come back to your board in a few years, especially when we get the new reports and come back to your board and just, you know, continue to keep you informed and updated of where we stand from a funding perspective as well. And we can always make changes as well to put more money into this if we need to.
If I may, we'll continue bringing these reports and updates every year as we have through the budget process as well. So the board will continue to see the funding level. We can discuss the funding strategy. We can let the board know where we're at. And I can update these strategies or another set of strategies that the board would like to, these are only, this is only three, you know, three different versions of doing the same thing, but we can come up with some other versions too to present to the board as well in the future.
Supervisor Hernandez, will you conclude?
Yeah, I mean, just my final comments is I definitely wanted to, I know through all this struggle that we're dealing with in dialogue, I am very, very proud of county staff and the way that, I mean, even historically, the way funds have been handled. I mean, it's pretty amazing to know that Samuel County, in light of all this, you know, the budget deficits across the state, Samuel County is not in a position, as far as I know, right, I don't want to speak out of turn, we're not going to be having layoffs and stuff like other counties are. I mean, some counties are having devastating layoffs. We're not even having any, which I think that goes to show how prudent and how frugal our county has been. We haven't had a whole lot, but what we do have, we're very careful not to spend it. And I appreciate our county staff and the foresight to consider what it means to make sure that we're not overspending and ultimately putting ourselves in a position to deal with layoffs and stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez. I will support option two, it gives the board more flexibility in the future. And it's definitely wonderful, you know, not to be, to handicap future boards. We should give them the ability to make decisions. I will open it up to the public. Do you have any speak cards?
If you would like to make a comment, press star nine if participating by phone or press the raise your hand option.
No speakers, okay. I'll bring it back. Thank you. Now we'll go item number 30. Joe Paul?
Thirty-two.
It'd probably be good to get a motion from the board. I think that would probably behoove us just for a future.
What's the supervisor of the board?
Mr. Chair, if you'll entertain it, I move to adopt staff recommendation number two. And I would like the staff to come back in 18 months and provide us an update of where we're at as well as part of that motion.
Is there a second?
A second. Medina?
Motion by Gillio, second by Medina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're good.
Five-zero.
Five-zero. Okay. Last.
Yes, we have our last presentation on regular agenda from our auditor's office. We have Joe Paul Gonzalez and I believe Leanne is going to be doing the bulk of the presentation, but I'd like to turn it over to our auditor controller, Joe Paul Gonzalez, and I'll let him open up. Joe Paul?
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors.
Morning. Morning and afternoon.
Joe Paul Gonzalez, County Auditor Controller, Clerk, Recorder, and it's for voters. My role as the county's chief accounting officer is to ensure that the county's financial transactions are recorded and reported properly in accordance with the authorizations provided in the financial decisions, adopted budget, and policies adopted by the board supervisors. Annually, the county's independent auditor audits the county's annual financial report, which is the CAFR, and the single audit that is prepared by my office and provided in the agenda board packet for your review. Here to report the results of the fiscal year 1819 CAFR and single audit is the county's Assistant Auditor Controller, Anne Levine.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'm going to be pulling up a PowerPoint presentation with just some highlights over the activity that occurred during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. So what I'll be going over today is a combined presentation of some revenue expenditures for our governmental funds. Our governmental funds are those that the county has control and administers revenues and expenditures and handles, you know, the day-to-day transactions of those. Some of those governmental funds include the general fund, HSA, mental health, our capital improvement project fund, as well as our impact fee funds. Those are just a few of what's included in our governmental fund presentations. Then I'll be presenting some activities for the general fund as a standalone. So some of the activity that occurred at the government-wide level was an increase to our total asset of $27.3 million. 7.3 is a result of an additional increase in impact fee revenues that were generated during the year. $20 million of that is an increase to capital asset value. It's related to two capital improvement projects, one being the jail construction project and the other the solar project. So along with that $20 million increase in asset value was a corresponding increase to our total liabilities of about $13.9 million. And that's a result of the long-term debt, external financing that the county acquired for those two projects. So looking at our governmental funds in total, our revenues by classification increased by approximately $10 million over the previous year. Charges for services increased by approximately $2.3 million. And $2 million of that is related to impact fees that were approved and had been collected prior to fiscal year 1819. $300,000 of that 2.3 is actually related to three new impact fees that the county began collecting during fiscal year 1819, and those three being for the library, IT, and general county facilities. Aid from other governments increased by approximately $5.4 million, 2.4 occurring in our capital improvement fund. That is related to some state funding that the county received for the jail construction project. Additionally, our road and behavioral health funds, their aid from other governments coming from local, state, and federal, increased by approximately $1 million in each fund over the previous year. So looking at our general fund, in fiscal year 1718, under, we received a one-time payment from PV2 of 2.5. However, in spite of that payment going away in 1919, our total revenues in the general fund stayed consistent. We saw a $350,000 increase over the previous year. Approximately 50% of the general fund's revenues are a result from taxes, which includes property taxes, sales tax, and TOT. You'll notice that two of our classifications for revenues, aid from other governments and taxes, shifted by approximately the same amount. Aid from other governments decreased by 1.3 while taxes increased by 1.3. That shift is actually a result of a reclassification change of our Prop 172 Public Safety Sales Tax revenues. So it's not necessarily a change in revenues, just a change in classification. So shifting over to expenses, our current expenditures for all governmental funds increased by approximately $9.8 million. Our current expenditures include salaries and benefits and services and supplies. The largest change or weighing up in $9.8 million occurred in our general government function, which has included the general fund, our health and sanitation, being behavioral health, and public assistance for HSA. Capital expenditures increased over the prior year by $7.7 million, and that is again in large part due to our jail construction project and solar project. So our general fund expenditures, the largest increase occurred in general government. Included in general government is our, you know, some departments, which includes the CAO's office, IT, county council, auditor office, treasurer tax collector. Those are just some examples included in the general government function. Some of the causes of that increase are to OPEB pre-funding that we had in 1819, which we actually did not make any additional contributions for OPEB in 1718. Additionally, there were some other changes related to our risk management insurance premium as well as increase to outside legal costs. For our governmental fund fund balances, restricted increased over the previous year. That increase occurred in the road fund, the behavioral health fund, and AB 109. Committed fund balances over the years, we started off with $3 million in fiscal year 1617 and that's the contribution we made to parts for extension. And then we shifted a few more of our balances related to impact fee funds into our committed classification, and that occurred in fiscal year 1718. So over time, that committed balance has increased largely a result of that reclassification. Our impact fee funds, actually, that increase over fiscal year 1718 to 1819 occurred in large part due to the increase in revenues collected in our impact fees. The impact fee funds alone contributed an additional $3.3 million increase to fund So in our general fund, our fund balances, again, stayed pretty consistent. There were some two changes in assigned and unassigned fund balances. The unassigned is, consists primarily of amounts that we hold at Trin Dell. They hold the county's funds for self-insurance, which includes our general liability and workers' comp claim. So that decrease is a result of just an additional amount recognized for liability claims. And the decrease in unassigned fund balance is a result of some major activity that occurred during the year. A lot of that is one-time occurrences. So we transferred approximately $870,000 for the south side landslide, and we transferred $1.4 million for the jail construction project.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick on that. And just so, to keep the board in tune and reminder is that with that, we're actually pulling that money back from the impact fees to actually backfill the jail expansion. And also we're addressing the landslide item as well. So just so the board's aware of that.
Go ahead. Continue.
So to summarize, what occurred in the fiscal year 1819 CAFR and audit findings, our external auditors, Cliff Mars and Allen, issued zero material weaknesses and zero significant deficiencies for the year. They found zero audit findings, and that's for both the audit of the financial statements as well as the audit of our federal awards. They issued an unmodified opinion of the county's financial statements and our compliance on major federal programs, meaning it was a clean audit. The CAFR and single audit report were submitted timely to the California State Controller's Office and to the Federal Audit Clearing House on March 27th, 2020. So included in our county comprehensive annual financial report is our component unit, the San Benito first five. Their auditor, Ed Bailey, issued an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion of the financial statements for San Benito first five for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. And their report were issued on December 10th, 2019, which is actually a two-month improvement over the prior year completion of their audit. So looking ahead to our fiscal year 1920, fiscal year enclosed, the auditor's office has sent out our year-end closing deadlines and schedules to the departments. We sent that out April 10th, 2020. The Board of Supervisors also authorized the county auditor to execute a contract with a new audit firm, Ed Bailey, who will be performing audit services for the county beginning fiscal year 1920. And Ed Bailey has already for the past year been working with San Benito first five and they also worked closely with us for the San Juan Cemetery District financial statements and audits. So that concludes the presentation and update of the county's CAFR for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Are there any questions?
Supervisor Hernandez?
No questions.
Supervisor Medina?
I don't think so.
Thank you. Supervisor Tallo? None? Supervisor Gillio?
No, sir.
I have no questions.
I just wanted to add one comment, if I may, Mr. Chair, the board. I just want to thank the auditor's office for really being in tune and having regular meetings and also all the department heads. This has been kind of an issue. We've been turning in the CAFR, if not the last minute, right before, you know, the deadline. So it's been, it's been a tough road and I think we're, you know, definitely have made a lot of progress. I think having the systems in place, having the right staff and the right departments now, I think, has really made this a lot better and we've definitely improved. And, you know, we have a clean audit, which is a big deal. So I just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work, the ad hoc committee as well for. committee as well, uh, for supporting that. Thanks.
Let me open it up to the public. Do you have any speaker cards?
If you would like to make a comment, press star nine now, or, um, press the raise
None? Okay, I'll close it. Uh, thank you, Joe, and thank you to all your staff, the county department, for doing a wonderful job. Anytime you can get this kind of report, it's like top-notch, and that's, that means a lot. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to, now we go, we will go to public hearing. Harry?
Yeah. This item's before the board to consider the vacation of two roads that are, uh, leading to and within CSA number fifty subdivision, which is commonly known as Dunville Estates. Representatives of the subdivision, uh, came to the county, requested that the road be vacated. Um, yeah, the ultimate goal is to install a gate at that subdivision, um, at some point in the future. Um, the county can vacate, um, the road if it makes findings, um, including the fact that it's not needed for, uh, public transportation, um, and, uh, it's not you to, needed for, um, for, uh, uh, non-vehicle, vehicle trails, et cetera. And those findings are set forth in the resolution. Um, we have drafted the resolution so that it reserves, um, all, any public easements that are in, in the right of way. It also, just in an abundance of caution, indicates that there's a reservation of a right to install a future road, um, at some point in the future. So, for example, if it turns out that this private road doesn't work for the homeowners and that they want it to be, um, rededicated to the future, we wouldn't have to go through eminent domain. There's a right to establish a road at some point in the future, again, should we want to do so. Um, this wouldn't change the services that are currently provided by CSA fifty. Um, included in the easements is an easement, uh, so that public services can still be provided, um, out there, including there's a right of way for any pu, public employees such as law enforcement, uh, fire ambulance, um, and it also reserves and accepts a vacation for the, uh, easement for vector control and inspection. Uh, we're following the, the, um, method that we have for other CSAs, um, where we, uh, so we're following that procedure so that the roadwork would still be contin, uh, provided by, uh, CSA fifty still, even after this. There is one, um, person that, uh, has submitted a letter in opposition, um, and that is included in the board packet. Um, I, uh, but, um, I have been told by the representatives of the CSA that the majority of the people within the CSA, um, uh, support the action that's being proposed today. Do you have any questions?
Questions, the board? Supervisor Medina?
Uh, this is in my district, so I just wanted to, uh, relay some information. Is, there was thirty, there is thirty-two homes. I received one opposition to the, uh, to the road. There is no parks in that area, so it's not, uh, you know, people from the community were going in there to play on their parks and stuff like that. That might have a different, you know, opinion on closing a road or dedicating a road to them, but there are no parks in that whole area. So I just wanted to be clear that, uh, there is really no reason for anyone else besides the homeowners to, to be in that area. So that's.
And also, I should note that unlike some other areas, this road, uh, only serves this CSA, and because it's surrounded by an agricultural easement, there is no possibility of future, um, connectivity to those roads because there's no place for them to go besides those, those homes that are served by that CSA.
If it's, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to open it up for public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any speaker cards?
If you would like to make a comment, press star nine now, or click on the raise your hand icon.
None? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearings, and then what's the pleasure of the board? Unless you have comments.
Um, Mr. Chair, supervisor Medina or Barbara, maybe you can answer. I just want to make sure that we're okay later on for, uh, the road, the maintenance of road efforts and all the struggles that we went through to, to do that with other subdivisions behind areas like this. We're okay?
Yes, that, we're, um, uh...
I just don't want them to shortchange themselves, so to speak, so I want to make sure we can take care of the roads with their CSA funds.
Yes.
Just like everywhere else.
Yes, because they have provided us an easement, uh, for public services. Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. Adopt a resolution approving vacating, uh, County Road Dunville Way and Four Corners Drive, road outside leading to the CSA fifty subdivision.
Second.
Okay, motion by Medina, second by Patolo. All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, five zero. Now we go to, uh, closed session.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we'd like to remove the one closed session and continue it to a future meeting. Uh, so, uh, the number thirty-three will come off the agenda, and, uh, thirty-two will be closed session conference with legal counsel, uh, regarding pending litigation, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A, Preserve Our Rural Communities versus County San Benito, uh, County Superior Court, San Benito County Superior Court, number C U twenty dash zero zero five three.
Okay, yeah, okay. Anyone from the public? No? Okay, now we'll go to closed session. Actually, for this one, we're gonna go in there.
What? We're gonna stay here?
Yeah, we're gonna go in there.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, we'll go in there.
Okay.
Just for this one.
Okay.
Anything to report out of closed session?
No reportable action.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor say aye. Aye, thank you.